2020, and we're going to open up the first public hearing. This is a public hearing to extend expiration dates for special exceptions, ordinances, ordinance 2020-18. And I'm going to ask the town attorney to brief us real quickly what exactly 2020-18 does.
So, under the town code, special exceptions expire within one year or after one year after they are granted if by that time, a building permit basically is not pulled. And if indeed, a building permit is needed for them to proceed to construction. For one special exception, as it turns out, though, I didn't think we knew it was just one when John and I talked about drafting this. It expired during that, what I'll call the COVID period, the period of time between March 17 and now, or not now, July 31, 2020, as I've drafted this. One special exception is due to expire on July 15, as a matter of fact. Under our current statute, the Board of Appeals can and often does extend these, but only after having a hearing. The type of hearings that the Board of Appeals has, although not necessarily for this kind of thing, could be quasi judicial, meaning there might be cross-examination, people put under oath, testimony and things like that. So it's kind of a cumbersome hearing to have virtually. So, John and I, at John's suggestion, thought it would be good to prepare an ordinance that essentially extended the expiration of any special exception, although it ended up being just one, that was due, has expired or is due to expire between March 17, 2020 and July 31, 2020, to January 1, 2021, unless subsequently, of course, extended by the Board of Appeals later, to some later date. It's just as an attempt to recognize that they really, we haven't been able to fit in their hearing before the Board of Appeals, and it allows them to have a little, us and them have a little bit more time.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Is there anybody who wants to make a comment on this public hearing, on this ordinance? Is there anyone here in the room? And is someone monitoring Facebook or anything else?
No Facebook, but my number and email are on it.
Okay. Okay. All right. With no one here to make a comment or anything, I'll, that we adjourn this public hearing on 20, on ordinance 2020-18, and we will reconvene at 7:15 for a public hearing on ordinance 2020-4, the Neighborhood Professional District. So that'll be at 7:15, and with that, we are adjourned. Thanks. 7:15, and we will call to order the public hearing, ordinance 2020-4, Neighborhood Professional District. And, and this one is, I'd say, concerning the Neighborhood Professional District, and I believe we have somebody here who is opening up a eye doctor's office. Tom, did you want to go over this just a little bit?
So, Dr. Schwartz has an eye doctor's office in town. He's looking to move to a different property and probably expand the operation a little bit to a specialty that he, I believe, to him to describe, so. But essentially, under our current ordinance, the neighborhood, in the Neighborhood Professional District, which is where the property we're talking about is located, you cannot, under current code, tear down a structure and rebuild it beyond its footprint. However, if you leave a structure in place, you can add to it by 25% in addition. So, I think Dr. Schwartz wanted to achieve just under 2,500 square feet, which is what he'd need to continue to conduct business in town. And I think the mayor was, asked me to get involved a little bit because I think he was interested in keeping a business in town, so. But in all events, what this ordinance would do is to put the situation where you take down a structure or rebuild it somewhat more even with the situation where you're going to keep a structure in place and add to it. So, what the ordinance attempts to do is to say that for principal structures that are torn down and which have been vacant for continuous, as introduced five years, as recommended by the Planning Commission, three years, that can be torn down and you can increase the footprint, but up to 2,500 square feet, so long as you can meet other aspects of the code, parking, the setbacks and all of that, you still have to meet all of that. You can do that and rebuild a structure. You can rebuild a structure so long as it does not go beyond a footprint of $2,500 in the NP zone. So that's what this ordinance is designed to, to do. Dr. Schwartz, this is a text amendment, so Dr. Schwartz applied for it, and he can probably better speak to what he's looking to do than I could.
So, currently operating out of 2,000 and change square feet has been somewhat challenging as our business grew, and we have special equipment that we use to design and fit specialty lenses, so we get referrals from the entire DMV area. The current space just became too small, and it just didn't make sense to stay there. So we just looked for a small part in town where we can just build something and make it look, that's actually a really win-win situation where we can take this part of town and just make it prettier and also have something that will be good for, for us as a business. So that's what we're trying to achieve, and actually, it looks like we're probably going to get 2,380 square feet, that's what it's going to come down to. So it's not even going to be 2,500, so. Thank you very much for everybody.
All right. Thank you as well. Roxanne, I see that the Planning Commission recommended three years as opposed to five years. Are you willing to speak to that?
Sure.
Thank you.
I think when something is vacant for a long period of time, and he has to demo this property because there's mold and there's a lot of things in there, so, you know, we felt five years was a little too long to have something stay vacant. So we kind of split the difference and did the three years. I think it's, somebody hasn't been in there for three years, there are significant issues and damage that would be done. So we, we decided on three years, and that's why we did that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Did anyone else want to make a comment on, during this public hearing, on 2020-4? And I remember you guys are on the phone, Jason, Pat, did you have any comments?
Just that I'd like to say this is a great tool to help us with redevelopment, to help us with derelict properties. Am I talking over someone?
No, you're good, Pat.
Okay, that was it. I just think it's a great project, and it really focuses on properties that have been abandoned. It gives us some flexibility that we didn't have to help with redevelopment. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Poirier, did you have any input?
Thank you, Councilman Hushour. I am good at this time, no comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Heather, have you got anything? Was there any emails or anything?
Holly.
I'm sorry. I got the H.
It would have been a mess. We just have a lot of hundred hours to solve this together, so. No phone calls and no emails.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, based on that, we will adjourn the public hearing for ordinance 2020-4, and we will reconvene at 7:30 to start the town council meeting. Thank you. And we are going to call to order the town council meeting of Mount Airy, Maryland. And we will start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. Do the flag of the United States.
Thank you, gentlemen. Welcome. And like what you've said, and the God, and the justice for all.
Thank you. We had two public hearings earlier. Most of us are in the council chamber. We do have the mayor on the phone and Councilman Poirier as well. And we'll go ahead and kick off the agenda. And the first thing on the agenda is a review of the Harrison-Lashir property as a presentation from Councilman Munder, so I will hand the floor over to Councilman Munder.
Thank you, Council President Hushour. Let me make sure once.
It's not likely not to do that.
That's weird. Technical difficulties on the projection screen.
There you go.
I'm not sure if this is getting broadcast to the same state. That's, alrighty then. We're ready to go. All right, this is an update on Harrison-Lashir property. A couple of things first. This presentation is for informational purposes only. The talks with the Industrial Development Authority of Carroll County, or IDA, have reached a point to move forward. The resolution for the annexation of the Harrison-Lashir property by the town of Mount Airy will be introduced at the August town council meeting. There will be many opportunities throughout the approval process for the public to comment. Continuation of a couple of things first. There have been no development plans shown or submitted to the town. This process is for the annexation of the Harrison-Lashir property only. If approved for annexation, the development of the property will go through the normal approval process, and the public will be allowed to submit comments during the annexation process and the development approval process if the parcel is annexed. An overview of the Harrison-Lashir property. The overall partial is approximately 250 acres, that's everything in outline in red. If annexed, the property is expected to be divided as follows. 128 acres for an employment campus, which is on the southern end of town beneath the power lines. 85 acres will be given to the town for parkland that would be developed later by the town, and then the remaining 45 acres would be developed at a later date. The future development of these, of this 45 acres would be dependent on water and sewer availability and how the employment campus is developed. This would be a separate application. The IDA estimates a buildout of the property to take 20 to 30 years, and the map shown here can change depending on any required changes from the town or the state. There are some benefits to the town if it's annexed. The town will control how the property is developed. The town zoning classification of office park employment will be applied to the parcel of land. I believe that's in the annexation agreement, correct, Tom? So there is no question on that. Town will receive the tax revenue from the businesses located on the property. It will allow a water loop to be installed for the Nottingham community. The parkland will be given to the town, and the town will acquire additional water sources. Disadvantages, if it's not annexed into the town. The town will not be able to control the zoning applied to the property. The county will control what is built there and in what style. The entire 250 acres could be developed as a county's own employment campus or a mix of commercial zoning classifications, and no additional tax revenue to the town to cover costs incurred by the town related to development of the property. Costs to the town if, if property is annexed. While the parkland will be given to the town, costs will still be incurred. A rough estimate of the cost is approximately $2 million. Town pays the costs associated with developing the raw water system, which are, which is the well, which is the water system from the wells to the water treatment plant, any upgrades associated with the water treatment plant, and there will be a waiver of certain fees related to well exploration and connection to the water system. And we, us and the IDA will cost share the water loop. It is expected that these costs will be covered by a 20-year loan. Some information for the additional water. The wells located on the property could support a total allocation from the Maryland Department of the Environment of 200,000 gallons per day. MDE, or the Department of Environment, may grant up to the allowable GPD allocation in phases. The IDA owns the wells on the property now and proposes to deed the wells to the town along with associated easements for the, any pipelines. If a 200,000 gallon per day is allocated, the town will receive an allocation of 125,000 gallons with the remaining 75,000 gallons to be used for the office park. This 75,000 gallon allocation does not include that additional 45 acre parcel slated for future development. And if MBE grants a lower allocation than 200,000 gallons, the GPD amounts will be adjusted. The timeline from here is August 2020. A joint resolution for annexation is introduced and is referred to the Planning Commission for recommendation. Between August and October 2020, the Planning Commission has up to 60 days to discuss, hold hearings, and provide a recommendation on the agreement. Between October and November 2020, the town council can approve the annexation plan, and the annexation documents are sent to the state and county for comment. Mid-January 2021, town council holds a hearing and final vote on the annexation agreement, and between February or March 2021, agreement becomes final if approved or not moved to referendum for the May 2021 town election. As noted here, this timeline may change as the process proceeds. Any questions?
What is the water loop?
The water loop.
I'm sorry.
What is the water loop?
If I get this incorrect, I'm sure Barney can speak. The water loop is a connect, currently, right now, for the Nottingham community, there's a single pipeline for water that runs down to the Nottingham community. Since what we water on the property will anticipate to hook in another water main farther down that line, so if there's ever a problem on the existing line, Nottingham will not, the community of Nottingham will not be with, without water. Does that pretty much sum it up?
Sounds good, yes.
Okay. It's just basically adding another, a backup for water for the, for the Nottingham community, which they do not have currently.
Okay.
Council President, can I be recognized?
Certainly, Mayor, go ahead.
First of all, I want to thank Carl, Councilman Munder, who has done a great job of making these presentations, to be, making it very clear that there will be public hearings, this is just exploration, this is part of the process, and that the citizens will have ample time to weigh in. So thank you, Carl, for doing a great job. Number two, just some clarification, because you weren't around 10 years ago. They did submit a concept plan of what it could look like, so just in case this ever does arrive, a comment was made that no plans have ever been submitted. A concept plan was, but no hard plan, no plan with MXD zoning, nothing like that. It was probably 10 years ago, but I just want to make that clarification. We did see a concept plan of what it could be. And again, so just to clarify that, and you made a good point that if the town annexes it, we don't want to see it develop in the county. It'd be best if it didn't develop at all, but if it's going to develop in the county, I'd rather the town have a say in how it's done and that the town benefit. With that said, the questionable 45 acres, I would urge our negotiating committee to look at having control of that 45 acres and not letting that go to county development, but rather that come back to the town, either in parkland or some other use. That's my only comments. Great job, Carl.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Poirier, do you have anything to add?
I just have one question to Councilmember Munder. When was your last meeting with IDA or with Carroll County?
We had a virtual meeting, was about a month ago?
And will there be another subsequent meeting following before the August town council meeting to get clarification on some of the questions that the mayor had just brought up, because I had the same concerns?
Nothing has been brought up. We did talk to them about the additional 45 acres. They were not inclined at this time to further discuss that.
Okay. That is all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I'd like to also say thank you to Carl for putting that together and putting it up in a, in a way that, you know, was pretty easy to understand. I think the goal of tonight was to make sure that the public knew this was coming, and so in August, it won't be a huge surprise to, to see this on the agenda. So, like I said, thank you, thank you, Carl. So. All right, next, Pam, did you have anything? I'm sorry.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Okay, and.
Council, Councilmember Vayd, real quick, and just a reminder, and I know we're probably doing it, but the property needs to be posted if it's going to planning to make sure that citizens know what's happening. We do that normally, I just want to reinforce it, that we'll be posting it in any meeting day.
I see John Breeding over here scribbling away, so. Okay. All right, thanks. With the limited amount of room, I don't think that there's, there's certainly nobody here from the county, from either of the counties, so, so we'll move on from there. Next on the agenda is approval of the council meeting minutes and closed minutes. Closed minutes came out a couple of hours ago. I hope everyone was able to get a look at those, but, well, unless anybody has anything specific they're going to bring up, I'll just wrap all these into one motion, if that's okay. So what we'll be approving is the June 20th town council meeting minutes, the June 20th public hearing on ordinance 2020-13, the proposed budget fiscal year 2021 minutes, the June 2020 public hearing on ordinance 2020-1, MXD, and then the April 28, 2020 closed meeting minutes, which were on payment for town staff and town employees. So would someone like to make a motion on all those minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, Councilwoman Washenbaugh has made a motion to approve all the minutes. Is there a second?
One second.
Councilmember Munder has seconded. Are there any comments? Okay, with no comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And Councilman Poirier, I assume you're an aye?
I am an aye.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the Mount Airy Police Chief Reed's monthly report, and I see him walking into the room now.
Chief Reed's with the Mount Airy Police Department's report for the month of June. During the month of June, as far as training and meetings are concerned, Corporal Geneva attended a field training officer refresher course on June 29th. Myself and Lieutenant Snyder attended a kickoff meeting for the Carroll County Law Enforcement Use of Force Policy Work Group. Most, majority of all Carroll County law enforcement will be working to get a review and consider adjustments to policy in regards to incidents that have occurred across the nation. Community outreach, June 14th, obviously, we had the demonstration in town, and MAPD and the Carroll County Sheriff's Office deployed for the demonstration in the downtown area. MAPD staffed the demonstration with nine officers and ensured that the demonstration was carried out peacefully. There's approximately 352 people that was, were observed standing on the sidewalks along South Main Street in the downtown area from about 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. The demonstration remained peaceful and no incidents were reported to the MAPD, and we worked closely with the organizers of the event and other towns to ensure public safety. Also, the MAPD has applied for and received a BARM grant through the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention. MAPD will receive $1,652 to fund 50% of 3D bulletproof vests for the patrol officers. Another grant utilizing the Carroll County Board of Education's school bus grant, MAPD has purchased backpack flashers for school-aged children. These flashers are now to, are to enhance the children's safety by making them more visible to traffic. The total amount for the purchase on the grant for these items was $873, and they will be given to children at special events that the MAPD hosts or attends, such as National Night Out or Back to School Nights. If anyone who's interested in receiving one of them for their children, they can obtain one by contacting the MAPD as long as supplies last, and they can contact Officer Betts, or I'm sorry, Community Services Agents Bet, Matthew Betts at the Police Department to obtain one. Also, as far as our Community Services Unit, we just want to put out some reminders. It's getting to that time of year, summertime, a lot of juvenile issues occur. Please remove any valuables from your cars and do not leave them in plain view. Lock your vehicles and park them in well-lit areas, and, and also, we've also had some rashes of checks being stolen from mailboxes, so if you're mailing checks in the mail, do so at a United States Postal Service mailbox or take it into the post office itself, so it can be mailed properly from that location instead of putting them along the street and putting, putting your flag up. Sometimes that serves as an attractive reminder to people out there to do some nefarious things. And again, the Community Services Unit is always willing to assist with providing crime prevention surveys and relaying information, and we can, anybody who wants to have a crime prevention survey done, they can reach out to the Police Department, we can arrange that as well. As far as the month goes for calls for service, we had 785 calls for service during the month of June. This is a 20% decrease in calls for services in comparison with May of 2020. We also had, as comparison to June of 2019, that was a 7% increase between the years. We had three Part III offenses, which was one attempted forceful entry at a residence at nighttime, and then there was two larceny thefts as well, and this is a 63% decrease of Part I crimes in comparison with May of 2020, and also a 67% decrease in Part I crimes in comparison with June of 2019. We did have 13 Part II offenses during the month of June, and again, some of the crimes that occurred that we were, that we investigated, one was a, in the 1,000 block of Mary Dell Boulevard for reported suspected attempted burglary of a recently sold home before the owners moved in, the new owners moved in. We did confirm that there was an incident there, and it remains under investigation. So if anybody has any information that they can relay to the Police Department's regards to any suspects or suspicious activity in that area, they could reach out to the Mount Airy Police Department. Also, we did handle a theft from a vehicle at Lorian Assisted Living Facility where a couple, some employees that, that worked there had their vehicle entered and removed several items as well. And also, we did have a CDS arrest during the month with a money seizure of $1,100. On June 26th, MAPD was dispatched to an automobile collision for investigation, which occurred on a ramp from I-70 to MD-27 Ridge Road. Now, the accident investigation, subsequent criminal investigation utilizing K-9 fetal resulted in the seizure of drug paraphernalia, four vials of suspected cocaine, and 35 gel capsules containing suspected heroin and fentanyl. Also, $1,100 US currency was seized, and the MAPD will be initiating forfeiture proceedings through the Carroll County State's Attorney's Office. The driver, in addition to the CDS charges, was also charged with driving attempt to drive while impaired by controlled dangerous substance and driving while impaired by drugs and drugs and alcohol. We did have one overdose in town this month where Narcan was utilized, and that will be the Chiefs, or the Police Department's report. Does anybody have any questions?
So, Chief Doug, can you give a recap of what happened on South Main Street?
Uh, there was a demonstration.
No, no, the, the accident at the end of South Main Street extension?
Oh, the one that I spoke about?
Is that the one where they collided into the barrier at the end? Is that the one where they collided into the barrier at the end of the extension?
I think this was a different accident. I don't have that information available, but yes, we've had accidents down there before where they run into the dead end.
Yeah, so it was, I don't know what, a couple of weeks ago, they, I guess they collided into the barrier at the end of the road. The driver fled from the accident. They called in helicopters and...
Right. Okay, I recall that.
Did they, I assume they apprehended the gentleman that ran?
I believe they know who it was, and it's still under investigation, so, yes.
Uh, Council President, can I be recognized?
Yeah, go ahead, Mayor.
I know that the entire council shares the comment I'm getting ready to make, but Chief, you did a, you and your department have done a fantastic job with community service. We received some steps that Police Departments across the country should be taking. I sent those steps to you, and come to find out, you're already taking all of those steps to ensure great community relations. In regard to the peaceful protest and counter protest, you and your officers did an amazing job of keeping things calm, to meeting with people beforehand, and to ensuring our democratic process works very smoothly. So, on behalf of the council and the citizens, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, and I think, I think we all do agree with you, and you did a really nice job on that day.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. All right, Kurt was behind you. I think he had something to comment, but he went back. So Pam, did you get all your questions answered on that?
No, I would like to maybe follow up with you. I do want to say that whatever Barney and Streets and Roads did at that intersection seems to be working.
Thank you. All right, next up is the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company Report, and we have Bruce Pauls here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the month of June, rescue calls, 67 in Carroll, 35 in Frederick, 10 in Howard, and two in Montgomery for 114 rescue calls. Fire calls, 16 in Carroll, 12 in Frederick, 7 in Howard, 1 in Montgomery for 36, which resulted in a total of 83 calls for service in Carroll, 47 in Frederick, 17 in Howard, 3 in Montgomery for 150 calls. I'd like to remind everyone that we will be sending out our raffle tickets, and they should be coming out sometime this month. So the money you are going to spend at the carnival, buy the raffle tickets. Lots of them. We have extras. So they will be available if you would like to take even more than what we send out. And also, on August 2, again, we will have our drive-through barbecue chicken. Thank you.
Yeah, that sounds good. Bruce, are the calls still lower than they were last year?
They're lower, but they're starting to pick up. I've noticed some of the EMS calls are getting to be more routine-type calls than we've had in the past. So they're, they are in that sense picking up.
Okay, and is there an update on the ladder truck?
If you go to the Fire Company website, you can see pictures of it being constructed. So they've made the cab and painted it, and they're working on the body. So it's still looking to be a September-ish delivery date on that.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, next up is community concerns, citizen comments, and I believe we have at least one.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to talk tonight about the survey. The COVID situation has put a stop to the survey almost because of the technology and analytic requirements for working at home. And we've hit a brick wall. Fortunately, the mayor has come to help us start getting through and resolving some of these issues we've had. And I think we're on the way, and we're meeting with the mayor, and a great shout out to the mayor for his help because we were, we were having a problem until he stepped in. So we'll report to you. Wendy's on vacation, so I just wanted to give you guys an update on that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And for the record, that was Michael O'Brien of Mount Airy with that update, and let's see, and we will move on. Is there anybody else here with community concerns? Okay, moving on to ordinances and resolutions. We got Ordinance 2020-1. This is the mixed-use development. It is for adoption. And Tom has distributed a working copy as well as a copy that has all the inputs from the Planning Commission, as well as the inputs that we gave at the last meeting. And then he also got an email today that had some other things to be addressed on it. And I know we have the chairman of the Planning Commission here, and Roxanne, would you like to speak first, or how would you like to go about this?
I'm probably going to be speaking during as well.
Okay.
The first thing I'd like to comment on is generally, I've been working on this ordinance and looking at it and talking to different municipalities, different land use attorneys, emailing Tom for a month since the last council meeting. At our planning conference, I was going to write a letter. The members of my commission said, no, you can't express our thoughts at the meeting. The basic thing that we were upset, not upset, kind of trying to work through is the part where the Town Council wants to make the approval. We've discussed when it should be done, how it should be done. Our first and foremost thought was, and seeing and watching the last Town Council meeting was that it was a little disconcerting that the legislative body of the town of Mount Airy wanted to make this decision when it actually is a quasi-judicial decision, which is generally made by the Planning Commission. If you look at Chapter 98, under the administrative section of that, it gives the responsibilities of the commission, the Planning Commission. It's, if you have the code book, but it says under B that the Planning Commission shall administer as set forth below or otherwise in the chapter. And there's six different things, items that the Planning Commission is to administer, one of which is number six, which is, it's hard not doing this when you're standing up, which is give concept preliminary and final approval of all site plans and subdivisions submitted except. So we have to identify, because we're talking about the pattern book. We do not have a definition for the pattern book in our terms. I think that we need to put that in there as to what the pattern book is. As we were going through the process, looking back, it is determined that there were three, the pattern book was used, A, as a site plan, and if you look in the text amendment under Chapter 98, it actually does say that the pattern book is the site plan. So going on that process, the site plan is a, we do a concept plan approval, preliminary, and a final. And I know that, I don't know where the Town Council wants to pull, where they want to be in this. My thought was, if you go through this entire process and you get to final approval and you don't approve it, a developer has gone through an immense amount of money and time with an architect, with different people, to develop that. He gets all the way to the end, and then he has, he can't get approval. He's not approved. That just not, is just not, I don't think it's, honestly, I don't think it's fair. And I don't think you would think that's fair if you were trying to develop something. You got all the way to the end, and then a group said, well, we don't approve that. We do want to work together with the council, the Planning Commission does. Like I said, they were a little upset, I will say. We have, it's part of our job, our description, I guess you could say, as volunteers. We spend the extra time to take the courses, and some of us even attend other courses to learn more about planning. I'm not saying that you don't know about planning. I'm just saying that's our due diligence to do that, and that's part of our responsibility as a planning commissioner. I take it personally to do that, and that's why, that's how and why I want to serve the town of Mount Airy in that vein. But we did decide that we do want to work together. This isn't a, you know, we're trying to be cooperative. We came up with this suggestion, and we were talking about a workshop, a preliminary workshop between, a combined workshop between the council and the Planning Commission and the developer. And at that time, it's preliminary. It's the first thing that they would do before we went to concept. The public can also be there. This is, yes, this is a very important amendment. This is going to be very important things hopefully are going to be happening, and we want the public to be informed the entire way through. I know it upsets me when people come to the public hearings and they say, why haven't I heard about this before? And it struck me that even though we do have it, that we're going to do it, we discuss it at the meetings. I think this would be a great option for the public to be on the ground floor of what's done. There are also, some suggest that you have a joint public hearing for the pattern book, let's say. What's the sense in us doing the public hearing and then the public coming back again in a month to go over the same things at the public hearing with the Town Council? And people have said that to me. Why am I giving you this information, and then again, I have to give it at the Town Council level? So I think that to help with the frustration of the public, something joint at the beginning would be awesome. There are different places where they require the developer to meet with the public with no one, no commission, no council, but they have to meet. They have notes. They take minutes, and they're required to do that first before they do anything else. I don't know, you know, that's a totally different idea, but I really like the idea of the joint workshop. Because our question was, okay, so you go to final approval, and we're just talking about the pattern book, but then there's other things that need to happen. Are you going to jump back in? Because you've made the approval, then you're going to have to jump back in every time there is a significant change or something that changes. We spent almost our entire meeting, or close to the entire meeting, on that. I will say that from the, I have calmed myself down from the beginning, from the first time that you were going over the ordinance. I kind of took it as an affront that you didn't have the confidence in us to do our job. I understand you want to try to protect us. That's okay. You know, we've been, there have been angry people in our midst before. We all have alligator skin, and we are doing the quasi-judicial part of your job. So, you know, we're doing the right, the wrong, the black, the white. So I think the important things we need to do, and I think that this ordinance has also come, given us and shed some light on what Design Collectives had said, was that there are ordinances and different parts in the code book that, where there's irregularities, and you really need to review them so that everything is coming together. And I think this is our first time that we're seeing this, and we really need to make sure, I would like to do an audit of all of our ordinances, especially in the planning part, so that they're all coming together and that they're consistent. Because we already have a consistency in the MXD-CC text amendment, which talks about and defines a site plan. We don't have that in the regular, in the Chapter 98. It's not in our terms at the end of the chapter. So I think that there's some issues there that need to, that need to be addressed. The one other thing that when we were coming up, and I'm trying to talk about it all, so I don't have to keep coming back up, but I know I will. When we were talking about the, I'm going to call them vacation stays. Airbnb is a business, so you wouldn't, you wouldn't put Airbnb in there. It's vacation stays. The comment was made that, well, we didn't put it in there because maybe we just didn't want rentals in Mount Airy. We did not say that. That's a violation of Fair Housing Rules and Regulations, so we would not say that. I just wanted to make that clear. I know it was hard because it was a Zoom meeting. I couldn't get in on it and explain our thoughts and processes. I hope that you have taken the time to look back at our meeting. I took the, you know, I went back and looked at the council meeting and also our meetings that we've had before that when we were talking about MXD. Something just slipped out of my mind, which I think I'll remember. It was about the staycations. Oh, that whole thing, and I've, it needs to be addressed in a separate issue. There's so many things going on in different towns and municipalities. You just can't plop it in somewhere and not have rules and regulations as to what you're going to do with vacation stays. Short-term rentals are different. Short-term rental is, let's say I sold a house, but I, my house isn't going to be ready, so I need a short-term rental for two or three months. That's a totally different concept. That's a totally different idea than a vacation stay. The other thing I did want to remind you of, I know I have signed up for it. You might want to as well. On July 21, they are going to do a new planning conference course. There are new things that have come out as of July 1 that are going to be, have to be in our new updated master plan, which is, the big thing is the housing element, where we have to address all of those things. That's something different. But you can always sign up, and I encourage you to take the class. I'm doing it again because it's new. They've added new things. I think at this point in time, that's all I have to say, but I do think we, that there are, there's a process that we can do, that we can all work together and get this done. And I think the Planning Commission is, was encouraging that as opposed to kind of shutting them out. I know we're not shutting them out, but there was, you know, a little bit of feeling there going into that. Okay?
All right, thank you so much. Would it be more appropriate to bring the ordinance in and then go into discussion, or? Do you have a recommendation, Tom, on that?
Yeah, you could, I mean, right now, what you have before you is an introduced ordinance.
Yeah.
Now, that's substantially different than what came back from planning and after, you know, through our various comments. So you could move that in, get a second, and then begin discussion and work off of the, I gather you'd want to work off of the tri-colored red lines that you have.
I want to make sure I respond to what Roxanne put out there, but I'm wondering if I should do that now or wait until we're into discussion, so. I don't think it matters much. So would someone like to move this in again?
I'll move Ordinance 2020-1 for discussion.
Okay.
Do you say which version or just?
It might help.
Probably the working.
I'm not really sure how to classify the ver, I would say, as the town attorney said, to start off, I would like to see, start off with the tri-color one, which is this one of the PDF that has the Planning Commission meetings, the Town Council, and the changes shown in the yellow highlight one. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Start off with that one, just to see if, and yeah.
Okay, all right, so that's moved in. Is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, Councilwoman Reed has seconded, and now we're into discussion, and I would like to address some of the points that were brought up by... that were brought up by Roxanne initially, if nobody objects to me doing that. So, now, of course, I'm speaking for myself based on, I'm watching the planning meeting and of course being active in the council meeting last time around. It concerns me that, that, you know, words of upset and taking it personally, you know, that kind of bothers me because I never, never have done anything, I don't think any of us had done anything that was a, a, a lack of confidence in the, in the planning commission. I, I don't think we're working that way. I think we're working along the lines of trying to protect the town to the best of our abilities. And like you said, for a developer to go in and create all of this and then get rejected at the end is unfair to the developer, but who's to say the planning commission isn't the one who ends up saying no at the end of the day? So, I mean, somebody's got to approve it. It's either going to be the planning commission or the town council. But somebody has to approve it. Regardless of who approves it, the developer has to put all that together and present it to somebody. Okay? My thought was that the planning commission would make the recommendation that would come to the council for the pattern book, because the pattern book, as I understood it, happens early in the process and is the first thing that is going to get approved. So once that pattern book's approved, then basically everything goes back to the planning commission and it, and it rests on the planning commission to make sure that the, the final site plan and everything else is satisfactory. So, and the only reason I wanted the council to have approval on, on the pattern book is because this is the most significant ordinance and classification of zoning that will fundamentally change Mount Airy. Putting Center Street through and having MXD development on Center Street will make Mount Airy look different than it does today. Now, we all ran on getting Center Street through and we all want Center Street to go through, but there's a price to pay. And the price to pay is development. The planning commission, who I do have respect for and I greatly appreciate everything that you do and the decisions that you make over years of service, you know, you're bound by the law of justice article. You serve at the pleasure of the mayor as opposed to council people who are elected by the people, who represent the people. And if we don't do our job, we'll get thrown out of office, which is acceptable to me. So our job is to make sure that whatever comes in is something that is going to be acceptable to all the citizenry of Mount Airy. So it had nothing to do personally with the planning commission. And I, and I regret that some planning commission members felt that way because that, that wasn't the intent. The intent was to make sure that whatever plan was brought forward was something that would be acceptable to all the citizens. And I think that's what all, it certainly was what my goal was, was to, was to make sure that whatever plan came forward would be acceptable to everyone. As far as protecting the planning commission from, from being harassed at a meeting or something, I, I know you guys are all capable of handling all that. And the truth of the matter is, that was not where that discussion came in. That discussion came in when we were talking about acceptable businesses in, in MXD zone. That's the only time that that discussion ever came up where, where I was concerned that you guys might end up with, with more than you wanted to handle. But that had absolutely nothing to do with overturning MXD ordinance. It had something to do with acceptable businesses in there. Okay? Now, the approval process, to my understanding is that, and Arnie, John, you're going to have to help me on this, is that the pattern book comes early in the process. It's the first thing that's going to come up that actually has everything outlined in here. And, and that pattern book is, is not in any other ordinance that we, in any other form of zoning that we have. The pattern book is unique to MXD. And, and my feeling is that if I were a developer and I was putting together this plan and, and putting out such a immense project that could fundamentally change a town, that that developer would want to know that he's not going to have a citizen uprising somewhere down the road. And that's my intent, is by getting the council approval, you know that we have to answer to the people. Even if the planning commission did the approval of the pattern book, the people aren't going to come to the planning commission after it's over and say, hey, you guys really messed up. They're going to come to us. And, and based on that, that's, that's the only reason that I want the council approval on the pattern book. After the pattern book's out, it all goes back to the planning commission. Yeah, all I want to see is Center Street and, and the buildings come around.
Well, I think we have to decide what the pattern book is. We've already got an ordinance in here that says it is the site plan. And it's part of the MXD text amendment. So we have to decide.
Okay.
Okay? And we decided when we were talking about this, that the pattern book is in essence the site plan.
The final site plan?
Well, no, it's, I mean, it's going to be changed back and forth, but that's, the site plan does that. And that's the responsibility of the planning commission. And that's why I'm saying do the joint workshop at the beginning.
Totally agree.
So that the developer can understand what our vision is and what we're seeing. And the public, because it's a workshop, will be there. And we can make an opt, we can opt that the public can make comments or not. But I really think that, like you're saying, this isn't, this is important, an important ordinance. And I think that it would be, benefit everyone that the more the public is involved in the beginning as opposed to the end, that it would be, it would benefit us all.
Well, that's our common ground.
Right.
We both agree to that.
Right.
Really, I think the only problem we have is that I, personally, I think the council ought to approve that pattern book and, and I believe you think the planning commission should. And that's, I think that's our fundamental issue here.
And that's where the planning commission?
Council President, may I weigh in quickly?
Yes, you may, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. Actually, the, the public hearing is something we have to do. So that's not debatable. It's going to go to public hearing. Public will, will have input, so you both are right on cue. And I'm actually going to think what I could say in addition to what Council President Larry said, but Larry, you nailed it. You hit it on every aspect. You laid out a perfect what, what you're doing. The council members are held to a higher standard. So the way you laid it out, it's going, you're just going to approve the initial pattern book and then it goes back for application to planning. They haven't lost anything. They are going to be planning the process, but it is better for an elected official that is held to a higher accountability to set what that planning will be. And then it goes back for application to planning. They have all the control they ever have. To me, it's no-brainer. Council President, you did a great job explaining it. I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Does anyone else have any comments at, at this point? Go ahead, Councilwoman Washaw.
I want to thank Roxanne for coming to our meeting. I did watch the planning commission meeting last week. And I, for one, was really, really surprised as what, something that was said by Leslie Dickinson concerning what I said at the June 1 meeting. So I wanted to clarify what I said at the June 1 meeting because it was pretty inflammatory statements. So it's, it's necessary for me to sort of clear my name here. When we were talking about Airbnbs, I, it was said to us that, and I know Leslie had clarified that in the meeting last week, that you took it out. Then there was discussion when it came to the June 1 town council meeting to put it back in. I was asked what my opinion of that was. And at that point, I said, well, I had gone to many Airbnbs. I don't have a problem with Airbnbs. This mixed zoning, I felt was going to have a mixture of many housing developments. As Leslie had noted in the planning commission meeting last week, one of the objectives is hopefully that there will be affordable housing that seems to be missing in Mount Airy. And when we, when I went down that path, I specifically stated that we probably would have different housing elements, such as, I started with townhouse developments. I went on to hopefully say we would have some single-family homes and that we were probably going to have either condos or apartments that may be rented. I at no point said that I was against renters. In fact, I stated an example that you and I both saw when we were on the planning commission for the Wildwood Community Park, that their development was supposed to have condos. The developer came in and said he'd like to change that to apartments. And I specifically stated in my June 1 meeting that the people at Wildwood were very upset about that because they did not want renters. And I was one of the people that stood and sat at that planning commission and said that renters aren't bad people, that, you know, that would, and you specifically said that that was something that the market now is, is leaning towards. So I would like to clarify that what, what my intention was, I probably didn't connect the dots as well as I should have, was that I understand short-term rentals, but I do not believe that in the town of Mount Airy, if people are going to be purchasing their homes, townhomes, condos, they want to be living next door to somebody that's going to buy a property and rent it out on weekends. And that is one of the main reasons why you took it out of the zoning. So I did not say anything inflammatory against renters. I said just the opposite. My past record will show where I stand, quite honestly. And I am familiar with the House Bill 231 that was passed, and I would not do anything to jeopardize the town in accordance with that Fair Housing Act. So I would like to have that on record. And I hope that I've reached out to Leslie Dickinson to also clarify that. And I hope that it was just, what I perceive as a misconception of what was said, because I'm clearly, if you look back to the June 1 meeting, I did not say anything that Leslie said I said in the planning commission meeting, so.
And I will reiterate, I think that vacation stays are a good idea. They just need, we, we need to, to.
Clarify.
Yeah, refine. There's, the municipalities I were talking to have, there, there are issues. And the triple-down effect is, is on those people. They don't spend time, they, they don't spend time and money in the town. And then, and I have, one of the municipalities is sending me a study that they have done, but that's another issue, I think. At that point, I think we've taken it out and we're going to have to decide at a later date if we should, it should be its own separate thing. That can be in the MXD, but, you know, it would have its, its own issues. You know, I think, I, yes, they're important. Most municipalities register the Airbnbs so that they know if something's, if there's a problem and that, and they can't get ahold of the owner, they have a record who the owner is so that they can get ahold of the owner to deal with it. I'm not saying that there needs to be any monetary value to this registration, but at least somewhere a file of who has an Airbnb and their contact information if something would have happened.
I'd like to also thank you for that. And I'd also like to say that, you know, hopefully, the, the building that is being, nothing's happening at this point on Ridgeville Boulevard next to the Bank of America. The hope was that that, when it's finished, would provide that type of short-term rentals. So hopefully that will be in, Mount Airy will be finished and that will be an opportunity for people who want to come for weekends and such.
All right, any initial comments? Councilwoman Reed?
No, other than I agree with Council President Hushour, a project of this scope has the ability to reshape Mount Airy, so we have to proceed cautiously. So if, if the pattern book comes before town council, I think we have an obligation to ensure that the public, that, that we are looking out for Mount Airy's best interest.
All right, and Councilmember Poreer, did you have any comments?
Just two quick things, and as long as Roxanne is still close to the microphone. Just really quickly, Roxanne, we were sent an email today provided by the Kaz Brothers on some additional comments in relation to the MXD ordinance. Did you guys, as the planning commission, see these comments or, or markups from the Kaz Brothers?
No, I, and I actually, Jason, just got a copy of those today.
And did you guys, did you guys approve those?
Guys, meaning the planning commission?
Yes.
No, the, the planning commission has not seen them. What I'm saying is I was just, I was just forwarded them today.
Thanks very much, I appreciate. And I would like to just go, just, I know that we are getting documents in preparation for a town council meeting. And there is a deadline to, to have things put on the agenda for the council to review and such. And Tom, I know you're doing a great job communicating and, and did nothing wrong in this situation, but man, you know, to get information the day of a council meeting or at four o'clock of a council meeting to then vote on something that is potentially, Larry, as you put it, that's going to change Mount Airy for the future, I have a real, I have a little difficulty voting on something that now I come to find out that the planning commission has not yet seen the information that the Kaz Brothers provided our town attorney that has sort of skipped over one of the major vessels that lead this town as far as planning. That will be my only comment. Thank you.
Just to address that, that is not their fault.
No.
I, this took a lot of time to put together. And I had some other things too, we'll talk about later. So if there's any blame to be had, it's not the developer's fault, it's on me. I will say this, that the changes really, I, if you look through the changes, they are not substantively different than what was discussed at the planning commission. If you look at the changes, it's tightening up and making consistent reference to a sketch concept plan, or not, I'm sorry, sketch layout plan. And so is to not confuse that with a concept plan, which is the more formal thing that comes later. It's, you know, the, the, I did not regard them to be terribly substantive, but I also wasn't sure that you all were going to be adopt, I, I know it's up for adoption, but this is a lot of stuff that might get changed depending on how you all decide the issue that Roxanne addressed. So, you know, I, you know, I do apologize, I try to get this stuff out as quickly as I can, but I didn't want it left with the impression that it was Kaz Brothers' delay.
Um, I hope I, I hope I made it clear that, that this was not your, your fault at all. I'm just sort of addressing something that has sort of continued to happen, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, if we do come to a vote on this tonight, that everyone has to be involved in the process. And as Roxanne and the planning commission has stated clearly tonight, they are going to be taking a look at this to make plans for our future. And they need to make sure that they understand the wording that the developer is sort of making changes too, to make sure that everyone is on the same page. I think we need to make sure that our team, the town council and the planning commission are on the same, are on the same page as far as terminology and wording. are on the same, are on the same page as far as terminology and wording, and we can take suggestions from the developer, but when I, when the planning commission has sort of just been skipped over and then brought forth, I just wanna make sure that if it does come to a vote, that the other council members are aware that this did skip over the planning commission, and, um, it, you know, when it comes to a vote, I would like to push this back to the planning commission so that Roxanne and her team can take a look at this. That's all, thank you, Tom.
All right, uh, thank you, Councilman Poreer. The email from the Kaz Brothers, did that just show up? I mean, already about two hours ago, did it get to you today, or a couple of days ago, or?
No, no, it, it came to me today, but they, I, they were turning that around from probably Thursday, Friday being a holiday.
All right, yeah.
Or, I think it was Thursday that they got sort of this final, um, red line, plus the clean, you know, the, the clean copies.
I believe one of their.
They turned it around, you know, very expeditiously, I don't want to leave the impression it wasn't what it was. They got it on Thursday, again, Friday was, Friday and Saturday were holidays, Sunday, so, what I would say about these, again, is these things were discussed at the planning commission. They're just, if you, and again, maybe it's best to go over them so that people can understand what they are. They're not, uh, change, you know, something from black to red, it's, let's make sure that the, the, the ordinance is, is, is clear. This was kind of a bear, I think everybody would agree, to pull together and make internally consistent and, and clear at the same time, and obviously, that's a process, and I think, you know, so.
I was gonna go over, once we started the discussion, go over, let's say the toilet copy first, to make sure there's no, any changes to this, people like that, then go over and bring in Victor's comments, or the developer's comments, or to this, to, so you would have the chance to explain it and get the process moving.
Yeah, and, and I would say that there is, I mean, this, as Tom described it as a bear, I mean, I'm not, I think there's gonna be so much we talk about tonight that, um, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna be comfortable voting on it, uh, uh, tonight as well. Uh, before we get to you, Carl, did, did you have anything you would like to say to us tonight? This is, uh.
Can I, can I just say one thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
I understand that Carroll County Media Center, it does not have any sound.
That's correct, they're, they're working on it right now.
Okay.
Are we recording from here, though?
We are recording to.
They are recording to the DVD.
Okay, okay.
Transfer that to them tomorrow, or even may, maybe take it home this evening when we leave.
Okay.
They can upload that tomorrow.
Great.
Cause there will be a recorded record somewhere. Okay, we're hoping so. Hold on, man, hold on, man.
Holly, are, are we doing Facebook Live, or?
It's still recording.
Yeah, they are, okay.
Hi, uh. My name's Victor Kazanj, and I'm with Kaz Brothers Developer, it's been referenced. So, a couple of things, uh, number one, today's email was really just a mechanical, um, the, the number one problem, I would say, you know, for my, or concern, is that there are seven or eight different terms for conceptual plans, sketch plans, layout plans, so it's not really clear. Usually, when you have an ordinance, um, you capitalize that term, and then you keep to it through the process. So, that was the one, one thing I, I pointed out today. Um, the second part is, what we're commenting on is not an attempt to bypass the planning commission, because I've been spending the last couple of years of my life with the planning commission. The planning commission created a document and sent it to you, which you have also changed. So, I have to respond to those changes now, and I can't go back to the planning commission and ask them if they're okay with what I'm going to say to you on those changes. So, that's why, you know, sort of, we're dealing together now instead of planning commission and me, which we did for several years. So, from a mechanical standpoint, that's why we're there.
I will say, what I took from the email today was just, you were looking for clarification on a few things, right? Not, you're not requesting any changes, just some clarification.
Well, there is one substantive part that has changed from the planning commission version to this version, and it's the approval process. That has become more convoluted, and I think more problematic. I have no objection to the Town Council, the public, planning commission, everybody having, you know, an opportunity from a public standpoint to see it and hear it. And one of the things she was referencing before, Montgomery County has a pre-submission requirement. So, if I'm going to submit a substantive site plan, not for two lots, but for something larger, um, I set up a community meeting at the, whatever the designated area is for that, um, project, and we do a public notice, and then we just go and we say, we are gonna submit this plan, so that everyone knows that wants to come and listen, that this plan is coming in. And so, that's sort of the start of the process. What you wanna avoid, though, what I wanna avoid, and then almost everybody is, going from public hearing to public hearing to back to public hearing to then another, you know, cause that's not, we'll never get it done. People, new people get elected, people, you know, it, you can't go through that process. So, it has to be a little bit more streamlined. And I would say, the one thing, as we're about to frame this conversation is, when we, so, let's assume that we have a public hearing, or, not a hearing, but a meeting where we say, hey, we're gonna submit this plan. The first thing we're going to submit is a concept layout. We're not gonna submit the pattern book, okay? Because the pattern book is a lot, a lot of work. The first thing I need to do is show you a plan where everyone's gonna say, you know, eek, I can't believe there's so many housing units, or so many, you know, so many of this, or so little of that. Once that's been vetted a little bit, discussed, mushed around a little bit and saying, hey, we can, we feel this way, we feel that way with some discussion, then the pattern book will come along, and they will be companions from that point on. But, conceptually, we're going to have to know that the 2D plan, looking down from above, is a, an acceptable plan. Then that pattern book puts a 3D element to it, starts to give you the architectural elements and things like that, the visions, some elevations, things like that. But the 2D plan has to be acceptable before you spend the bigger dollars on the 3D plan. Those two can then be grouped together and approved, and it, you know, I, I'm not gonna weigh it in, I don't really care who approves it, as long as it's approved once and not twice to go through different people. So, those two things are done, then you have the DRRA, the Developer Rights and Responsibilities Agreement, which is what we as a developer need to know. All right, we've gotten our general subdivision plans, we know generally what we're gonna do, let's write down what I get to do and what I have to do. And no one can take that away with some obscure rule three years down the road, because we're gonna write it out, because I'm doing these things, I get to do these things. That may be the opportunity for Town Council to be the approver on that one, that may, you know, I'm just throwing these things out there. That's one more thing that somebody's going to have to approve. I don't know if the planning commission can actually sign, I, you know, I'm, right? So, the Town Council, that may be something that the Town Council.
Developer rights.
Has to sign anyway. So, there's, there's another, there's another bite at the public hearing apple in there. But after that, there shouldn't be any more hearing and hearing, unless there's a, if you have a format where site plans have to go on consent agendas or something like that, I get that. But staff is really, should be responsible at that point. The 2D plans have been looked at, the pattern book's been looked at, all the development obligations have been set forth, it's really technical plans, how deep are the storm pipes, how much is the hydraulic pressure in the water lines, that kinda stuff. So, when I read what you see, what you have now, it looks like you're circling back again to one more public hearing, even after those things are approved. And I'm not sure that that's the original intent of when, when it came out of planning commission, it went from a three-step process to a shorter process. Now, it's become a wider, longer process and more circular. So, I just wanted to frame that as you guys were, I'm talking about, okay?
I think, uh, I was gonna ask Tom about that developer rights and responsibilities, is that, uh, something that would be a council-approved?
Yeah, so, um, we currently in the code do not have, uh, an enabling ordinance to, for the town to enter into that, you would need that. So, the third attachment, um, which I titled, uh, possible further changes needed to the town code based on enactment of the MXD ordinance, as, as amended, um, a couple of those things address Roxanne's concern that if you're gonna put the pattern book ultimately in this body's hands, then some things I think need to change in section ninety-eight, uh, in chapter ninety-eight particularly. But then the other thing is, starting on page two, you would want to enact, uh, an enabling ordinance as a part of chapter ninety-eight, where it would fit, I'm not quite sure yet. Uh, entitled Developers' Rights and Responsibilities Agreement, so on page two, and after that, I've given you, uh, a, um, a sample of what one looks, what one would look like. Um, it comes from Frederick City, um, they have this ordinance basically, and it's verbatim that, except I've changed city to, to the town of Mount Airy, obviously. Um, so, I wanted to sort of put this together to pre-frame, you know, if you pass MXD, there may be some other things you may wanna do to the code to tidy it up. And last, and of course, as I noted, is you have this MXUCC special exception, and I won't go into the convoluted procedure that that and MXD went through, but suffice it to say, you may wanna look at something in the MXUCC once you've decided on what you wanna do with the MXD. Do you want certain aspects of the MXUCC to be different or consistent with? Do you need the MXUCC anymore? So, anyway, that's the purpose of that document, I've added to that, perhaps also coming up with short-term rental regulations for vacations.
So, in other words, Tom, sorry, not, this is the housekeeping document, if, when, or if MXD is passed, so we're not looking at this, and I just just say the housekeeping items, that would have to be addressed.
At some point, I'll need guidance from you all, whether you want me to start drafting this stuff, but.
But it does sound like, uh, Victor, uh, that, that developer rights and responsibilities, that is a, uh, that, that's a, a deal breaker for you, we have to have that, true?
Yeah.
Yes.
There's actually a second part, you know, cause it's related to the APFO.
Yeah.
And that, that, and we haven't really talked before, but when we do that concept plan, that first step, I'm going to ask for an informal analysis on the APFO. I'm gonna have to know right there that no one's going to tell me that the town has to have a certain amount of open space, not just the project, or we don't have school seats. We need to know before we spend a million dollars in planning, that this is the standard for your project. Now, if three years later, that standard has, you know, and now it's a hundred and six percent instead of ninety-one percent, I get that, that's, that's fair. But we need to know in the beginning, and once, if we get to the DRRA, and, and we already know what those standards are, they get, you know, they get written down for good at that point. And so, that's, that, that, that has to be done, because, you know, this is a long-term project that we're talking about, there, there'll be other MXDs, but just for our project, it's not a five-year project, it's a ten, twelve, fifteen-year project. You guys are gonna change, the planning commission's gonna change, lots of people are gonna change, and can't, can't say every, every election, hey, we're gonna hold our, you know, cross our fingers that people still wanna have, you know, what they, what we did, so.
Okay.
That's fine.
Just to explain the legal, the reason for it is, is that in Maryland, a developer's rights do not vest until such time as they begin construction toward, they break ground and do something, they construct something specific to their project. So, for projects that take a long time in the planning stage, you might have a concept approval and APF approval in, you know, year one, but the development doesn't break ground for, I don't know, three years la, I don't know, whatever it is, three years later. So, the DRRA is, is designed to, uh, front-load or bring forward in time when a developer's rights vest. Uh, they don't have, they don't have to break ground to, to vest, they, they vest when the DRRA is approved and signed.
DRA can have like a time limitation put into them, too, correct? Not, not saying, not what I'm saying is like, say you're, it's approved now, and say, we can re, revisit it in like, in five years, just in case conditions change, but not change the, the rights agreement, but not give you like a twenty-year.
Yeah, so.
You know what I mean, like?
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't, I don't wanna get a laugh, oh, here now, then you don't break ground for twenty, twenty years.
Sure, sure.
Or something.
Yeah, absolutely, that's written in. So, for example, the, the code that he copied, the Frederick County Code, it has a five-year, unless you want to make an exemption, in which they do for projects like this. But what you would say is, hey, phase one has X amount of time to start, X amount of time to complete, phase two has X amount of time, and you can do it that way, once you know what the phases are. As long as, as long as the APFOs are still met, as long as all these things are still met, and the standards are still in there. But yeah, you can, you can write it any way you want it, but it'll probably be more of a phased kinda thing.
Yeah, that, that's fine, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah.
But, okay, um, okay, so, may I do some?
You got the floor, Carl.
Thank you. Well, we're getting off the track here, so we, what we're doing tonight, or at some point with MXD, is we're not approving any project or anything else. We are approving a. We lost Pat. Oh, okay, I was like, what's? Dolly and Beckin. Okay. What we're doing here is approving a new zoning classi, classification. So, anybody that wants this is passed, anyone that wants to develop anything else, has to go through the approval process to transfer any, this new classification to existing property in town, correct, Tom?
Right, so this is the first step to create the ordinance, to create an MXD, the next step would be through the master plan process, do zone, a property, MXD, and then off you go with the.
I don't wanna get the, give the impression that something has been pre-approved, ready to go now. They mean a developer that comes into this town would have to still go through the normal approval process to have this applied to. So, I just wanna get that clar, clarified out here. So, that's, that's it, and I agree with what Councilwoman Reed says, and President Hushower say, this is a, a town-changing ordinance, and we should, council should have some say in it, in it, I'm just not, maybe not sure, it sounds like we need to decide on, at what stage? Like, I would, I'm viewing it as the beginning stages of it, like the conceptual plan aspect of it, because it gets down into the details of what the buildings will look like, and the roads will look like, concrete, flowers, trees, everything else, which in my viewpoint, the council should not have any say on how each little element of, uh, development is built. It's more like, hey, you know, where the locations of certain things are, the number of units, and once that, we can agree, give the approval on that, it's back to the planning commission and to, to work out the details. I don't wanna be saying, okay, and here's another change, gotta come back, we need to prove it, send it back to planning commission now. Once the overall layout or plat design is approved by this council, or a council, I'm good to go and let planning commission and town staff have it from that point. So, it's just working out of what stage needs to be developed, I get, uh, approved.
I think realistically, that is the, probably the best scenario from a vesting standpoint as well, because if we as a developer know that the town, publicly-elected part of it, and the public who's got to look at it are okay with the general plans, you're right, the nitty, the nitty-gritty is supposed to be, and we will be bringing that all to the planning commission and to staff, and Town Council will have to go back, cause I, I think the DRRA has to be signed by Town Council. So, it, it comes back and you can say, this, this does meet with what we thought, you know, when we originally started. But, truthfully, if you look at the con, concept plan, and Town Council's okay, and then it's passed the planning commission, say, we're okay with the project, now make sure it's done correctly? I mean, that's, that's a win-win for both sides, cause everybody's gotten a point.
And with, and it sounds like with the DD, we're giving, the DDRA, if I got it right, we do kinda have like final approval.
Yeah, to make sure.
And I would sure, hope the plan, I'm pretty sure the planning commission would say, hey, we checked off on the concept plan, you're still following it throughout the whole process, so I trust them not to say, you know, not to deviate from the concept plan, or what was pre-approved at the first phase in any great way.
Well, they will have, actually dove deeper into it, right? They've gotten into the 3D.
Yeah.
They will have all of that, so that, that DRA will have the 2D look, which you had already looked and approved, plus the 3D standards that go along with it. And so, you guys will actually have. And so you guys will actually have a chance to look back and then say, okay, we get to look at the deeper look as well, okay, this is what it looks like, so.
So in terms of, of the terms that you're talking about, you got a concept plan, and Roxanne, I'm, I'm gonna ask you after I speak, how you feel about this, but concept plan, which is two-dimensional, which is something that possibly the council could approve, leading to a pattern book, which would be something turned over to the Planning Commission, and, and we wouldn't be looking at that.
Yeah.
And then the follow-on to that is a DRRA, which would come back to the council for approval.
Final approval after the...
So basically, the only thing the council would be looking at is the concept plan.
The pre-concept site plan.
Well, using the terms, right, yeah. That's one of the things that has to be done.
The right term, I want to know the right term.
It's a pre-concept.
Pre-concept site.
Right, and then the pattern book, and then the DARA.
Okay.
But I only have one question for Victor real quick.
Yeah.
How many DARAs have you been involved in, and how many times have those changed from your perspective or a talent perspective at that five-year window?
So, it's a fun, that's a good question, actually. They change a lot.
Yeah.
Because the number one thing that happens to big projects like this is the economy. And when you don't hit the window right, you know, things go like this. So someone will come back and they'll say, you know, we can't build two hundred thousand square feet of office, we want to build, you know, three million apartment units, whatever the heck they want to try. It's important, though, to, to note that this project, this market is somewhat constrained. You guys did your design collect, there's, there's not much that can go here beyond that report. That report is a pretty good, it matches up very clearly with what we thought was the market. So they can change, but the town still retains all the power on that change. So if someone has to come back and wants to renegotiate, they have to give something, you know, they...
The developer or the town?
Yeah, because, because once it's written down, we're both bound by it.
Right.
And if I don't want to develop the fifty thousand square feet of employment, I have to tell you, you know, let's say office.
Yeah.
I have to say, this is why, and then the town, town has to say, he's right, or he's wrong, you know?
It starts all over again.
That, yeah, that portion of...
Back to the pre-concept site plan.
On smaller, on more micro issues as opposed to macro. It'll be, it'll be more like, phase, let's just say, phase three is not what we think it is because of. And it could be something as simple as, we thought we were gonna do condos, there's no market for condos, but there is a market for multifamily rentals. It could be larger, where you say, we sold out the hundred and fifty thousand square feet of retail immediately. We want to take out forty townhouses, you know, and put in another twenty thousand square feet of retail, it's, you know...
That's a substantial change ultimately.
Right.
Which would have to come back to everybody sort of at the beginning.
Absolutely, yeah. So that DRRA can be negotiated. But they do get changed a lot, but everybody's part of the process. It's not, hey, we're, we're gonna make this change, you guys have to sign off on it.
It wasn't a backdoor change.
No, you can't do it that way, no.
Now, I wanted to say, could we make sure that Pat and Jason are still on with us, because I think we might have lost one or both.
Mayor and Councilman Porier, are you both here?
Yes, I am here.
Okay, that's Councilman Porier, and Mayor?
Have you been, did you hear everything, Jason?
He lost connection at one point. I'm not sure, that phone did not work well with the microphones, Gina, that's why I'm using the other phone.
I know.
That's not hearing one of the other phones.
Okay.
But did Ja, Jason, did you hear everything we just discussed?
It is harder to hear with the muffled. I can sort of hear and piece together.
Okay. The challenges of technology.
Lou?
I'm good, thank you.
Good to have you back, Mayor. So Roxanne, so we're talking about a pre-concept site plan that might be approved by the council, a pattern book that would go to the Planning Commission, and then the DRRA would come back, or what did you call that, the DARA?
DRRA.
Yeah, would come back to, come back to the council as well. Is that something that is, is a little more palatable to, to a Planning Commission member? I, I'm not asking you to speak on everyone.
I can't answer that. I, I, you know, I mean, I have to, um, it's a little more palatable, I think. I still think, you know, a joint workshop at that point with the developer would be so that we're all on the same, we're all on the same...
I'm totally in agreement.
Yeah, and I, and, you know, I want to iterate, and like Jason said, we are, we're a team, we're trying to do this together as a team. And I think that that, that would go along, that, to me, goes a long way. And, you know, the DRRA is, I mean, it's, it's, it is, it's a protection for, for you and the developers as well. And yes, we haven't had anything real big to be able to do this with.
Right.
But it, you know, I mean, if you look at what the agreement includes, it includes everything that we're gonna be discussing with him, how many, how many units of, of what townhouses, how much retail, you know, what's going in there, and it has to be a happy marriage, you know?
And I'm, I'm in total agreement with that, I think we all are, and like I said, I don't, nothing was ever meant to be personal.
I understand that, but, you know, we work, you know, there's a lot of due diligence that goes on in the, in the Planning Commission, as Patty knows, and, and, you know, it did come down to the fact that they understand, you know, I just don't, and my other thing is, and it's frustrating to me, because it's frustrating to the public, when we have to have a public hearing on whatever it is, and they come and make their comments, and then we say, well, now we're giving it to the town council, and they're gonna have a public hearing, and it's like, well, why do we have to go back to them and say the same things that we just said to them? And I do know that Montgomery County, on some projects, not all projects, on some projects does do a joint public hearing. And, I mean, it would be run via, at that point, the town council, but, you know, I don't know if that's a possibility or not. I just, I just, you hear the frustration of the public, and, and they want to know. And this is, like you said, it's, it is, it's gonna change the face of Mount Airy. But it also is, is, as you and as everybody there knows, we're coming to a point where we have to have something to help to maintain the economic viability of this town. And this is one of those things that will do that. So I think that we all need to be involved in it, and, and that, you know, maybe, maybe at this point, we do do just a single, I, I don't know.
So just so that I understand where this is all going, we're talking about a pre-concept plan coming to town council, at which time we'd have a workshop with Planning Commission, and then at the end of that workshop, town council would approve it to move it forward to planning, and then you all...
Yeah, I think that would be a very...
And then the normal process.
I can't say totally, but that's, I mean, we were, that was the way that the discussion was going, and I have to apologize, I, I got a little hairy there. Because of the crying baby.
Let me just reiterate something as well. As Pam, as Councilwoman Pam Reed said, I just want to clarify, so if we're going to have, which I love the idea of having us both be in the same room and hashing out things together, I think if we can try to make it easier and a smoother process, that's the best, you know, approach to this process. However, would we be approving it at that point, or we have this workshop, and then we would have a public hearing, and then it comes to the council?
Well, I think it would come to the council the following council meeting, but in terms of a public hearing, Tom, would that...
Well, you can do it how, how you want, and I'll want to get clarity as I try to redraft this, as to when, what occurs, and how. But from, from what I'm, I'm hearing, there's sort of this sketch plan or a pre-concept plan, I don't know, we'll find something to call it consistently throughout. It's submitted, there's gonna be a joint workshop with public, then the developer's probably gonna need some time to do any revisions to that. Then if you're saying it comes to the town council at that point in time, it's approved, and then what happens next?
Then it would go back to planning.
Then it would go back to planning, where we would then do the pattern book.
Yeah.
Right?
All right. So we want to make sure two things happen. One, that the public is involved.
Right.
So, the, quite, my first question is, are the workshops just the people in the room here, or is that a public invited thing? So, because if it's just town council and Planning Commission, then the likelihood is, we'll submit the pre-conceptual plan, and we'll have a workshop, but it has to go to somebody publicly to get some comments and talk. And it's probably the Planning Commission that'll be either a open charrette or the Planning Commission, that people will be able to come in and say, this, this plan's cool, this plan sucks, whatever they want to say on it, before it'll go back to negotiating, you know, anything. Obviously, the, the initial workshop will give us some feedback, but you're gonna want the feedback from people, and we're gonna want the feedback from people after that. So there's, there's gonna be several steps, I think, in between when it circles back to the town council. It's just, I think you gotta decide which of those steps are public hearings and with who prior to that.
Yeah, I was thinking that the workshop would be with the public and public comments.
So would it be more of a charrette?
Right.
Yeah, you could call it a charrette.
All right, so a charrette occurs before the preliminary concept site plan?
No, so my understanding would be the preliminary concept would be the charrette material we'd be discussing with the public, with the developer, with planning, and with town council. Once we've established exactly what we want as a town, and the Planning Commission, and the citizens, and possibly the developer, then, once that design is, that pre-concept is ratified, then the pattern book would come in behind that, and then that's what would then be presented back possibly to another charrette, if you want to call it that, and a joint commission to make sure everybody's on the same. Then the DARA comes in right behind that.
Actually, that, that's a little different from what we're talking about.
Okay.
Just so, yeah, so if you're, again, this is just my opinion, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to dictate anything to anybody. The pre, pre-plan comes in, the charrette, which is a public hearing for everybody, town council, planning board, and public. I think most likely after that, then you can have a workshop where town council and/or Planning Commission can all be together, and it's a much more focused element at that point. You've heard the citizens, we've heard the citizens, now let's get to the crafting to make sure this works.
Council President, can I be recognized?
Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, just real quickly, two clarifications. A workshop does not include the public, it's a workshop, a public hearing is a public hearing, so you could just call them by their name. Number two, maybe I was under a misunderstanding. I thought the plan, the council was debating on whether they should approve the pattern book, and that was my understanding. Once the pattern book is approved, it's handed to coun, handed back to planning, for planning to administer it and to decide how it's implemented, you know, based on the structure that town council's already set. I'm having trouble hearing on the phone, are we saying that every time a site plan comes through, plan, council is gonna be involved, or just in setting the planning book? Please clarify.
I think you, you went offline for a little bit, and while you were offline, what was discussed is that the initial thing that will come out of the developer is a pre-concept site plan, as opposed to the pattern book. And, and Victor, is that right?
That's right.
Victor stated that the pre-concept site plan is basically a two-dimensional product, and then it would, once the council approves that, then it would go to the Planning Commission for the 3D concept, which is called the pattern book. And so what we discussed around the council table here was that we would be amenable to approving the pre-concept site plan, and then letting the Planning Commission hit the pattern book and take it from that, from that point forward. So I think you were offline when we started throwing around acronyms and new titles.
Okay, as, as long as, because I think the Planning Commission should be the one that's applying it once you all set the initial structure, because you're held to a higher level.
Agreed.
But after that, the Planning Commission should get in the weeds. Number two, I jumped off the line, your wife's okay, she had a small cut on her finger, I had to put her in contact with somebody, but she's fine.
What?
Yes. That's why I got offline, but she's fine.
Man, I tell you.
With the pre-concept site plan...
All right, go ahead.
Thanks.
Having a charrette, then a workshop, and then council approving it and sending it to planning, does that work for you? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, I think that, and I think that, that's a, you know, more streamlined format. And then, once that goes, then we will have that concept plan in hand, drop out the pattern book, and in truth, the pattern ma, book may make appearance early in the process, because we're gonna have to know some things. You're gonna ask questions, believe me, you're gonna say, oh, that, that's cool, I can see a blob of retail, what does it look like generally? So some of those elements will probably be part of that pre-concept plan. But yeah, I think then, once that's done, and then we go to the Planning Commission after that, then it's pattern book, that's a pattern book approval, at least.
So, so I feel that kind of accomplishes what we wanted, right?
I, I think it does, and I think it opens the door to work together with planning.
Yeah, I, I think, two of my concerns was a participate, participation early with the Plan Commission, and also the public participation. I really think that this is very, is important enough that they need to be early in, in this game, not just when, you know, when the public hearing i- is involved, because this is, it, I mean, you, we've seen it, where they come and say, I, I didn't know this was going on, why, why didn't I know anything about this? And I get very frustrated and upset, because I want that, you know, I would like them involved day one. I mean, ideally, I would like to have that developer community meeting at, in all of our things, so that the public is right there. Because the developer's not gonna promise anything at those meetings.
The chronology is a charrette, a workshop, council approval of the pre-concept site planning, goes to Planning Commission, firm book, and then the DRRA is signed by council at some point after that.
Right, and if you, I mean, if you look at the stuff that is in the DRRA, it's basically the stuff that's gonna be in the pattern book, some of the stuff, maximum height is... Um, part of that.
What I would classify as the main things of a concept.
Yeah, and it's protection for all of us, I think.
But is, is council looking at every concept plan? That's, I'm getting confused.
No.
It should be a one-time deal.
We only want to look at it once.
And, and only for MXD, not for...
Only in the MXD. Yeah, they will look at everything in the MXD.
Yeah, and that, that DRA will have a combination of the pattern book and the things that you approved in that pre-concept plan. Density, APFO standards for the project, that basic, those, they all have to be put together. So both of those two elements will be summarized in the DRA.
All right. To clarify, and I ask this because, under our code, the concept plan for other developments, and I assume this one is important in a number of respects, not only because you're getting a concept plan approved, but also that's the moment under our code when water allocations are provided, as well as APFO is measured. So the concept plan, not to be confused with the pre-concept plan, occurs then at Planning Commission at the same time as the pattern book? And is that, I guess, where do we fit in the con, the formal concept?
So I don't know all the terms that you guys use, so if I'm, if I'm interchanging them incorrectly, I apologize. If we know in the beginning what our APFO standards will be applied to the property, then we can move forward from there, and then they get adopted in hard form in the DRRA. But at that point, you already have a concept plan, 2D look at the project, you have a pattern book, which is the 3D design of everything, and you now have everything memorialized in a written form of what we have to do and what we get in return. So my question for you is, in, in almost every other jurisdiction, I would then start submitting my site development plans and permits. Those are the actual mechanical plans that Barney and staff look at. That's when you are doing elevations in the grading plans and things like that, because all of the... Because all of the layout has already been done. So I'm not sure what your concept plan is. If it's that, then great. If it's another design plan, then it doesn't need to be in there.
No, I think it's that. Am I right? So I guess, when do we want to measure A P F O? And it's got to be before the D R R A, obviously.
Correct.
After the, but we're talking about the pre-concept. It would be done then.
The standards are set at some point, meaning you're going to tell me all the things that I have to meet from an A P F O. I need to know that right away. And then I need to, because I need to know, is there a path to development? Or is there no path to development?
See, my question gets to, how much of this code do I need to change to accommodate this? So I change the least if we say that the pattern book and concept plan occurs right before the D R R A. Because that would be consistent with how we do things.
Okay.
Or maybe you get the pattern book done and then slightly after that, you get the concept plan done. It's approved, water's allocated, A P F O is measured, you passed, you know. And now we go to the D R R A, which comes back to this body. It's approved. And then my, so am I on track? Is that how we want me to draft this so far?
Here's my only problem with that. If you asked me to add one more plan in front of the D R A, I still don't know if I'm going to meet my A P F O.
Right.
And I will have spent even more money without knowing I have a vested right at all.
Can we give you a preliminary A P F O to say this is what we feel is accurate?
Well, if we get that in the pre-concept plan, the one that the town council reads and approves, if we get it there, we know that we have a path to development in some form or fashion, and that doesn't change, meaning the standards don't change, there's not a new standard added or something else that we can't count on, then we just, we're going to want to, we're going to want to have it, you know, like told, like, here's the date, earlier rather than later. By putting more plans in between, that means we're pushing out our chance for success on the project. It's just, that's just the, you know, the nature of it.
See, we we've never front-loaded the A P F, I mean, like this.
It doesn't have to be day one. I mean, don't get me wrong, but it can't be after I've done all of my development plans and permits. And then I'm told, oh, by the way, we went three kids over this year. You can't do it. Because that's the end of the process. You know, the permit plans, I wouldn't even start a permit plan if I don't know that I can develop it. Because I want to do the permit plan, get my permit and start. So before I do those permit plans, I need to know that my A P F O is good.
For whomever does anything to that way, that's logical.
Right.
Yeah.
It's just that, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of money and a lot of layers to it.
Oh, yeah.
But that particular layer, which is, I'm ready to start, I want, I wouldn't do that plan unless I knew I could start.
Yeah, and I don't think the council wants anybody to come forward, look to.
The kind of, okay, I'm trying to.
Change in the A P F O.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sounds like that's more of a technical aspect that has to be worked out.
Yeah, we have time.
Behind the scenes.
Yeah, because we need to, because in the preliminary, we're going to know approximate if there is, and the, if there is.
Currently, we're still in a deficit too, in our open space.
Exactly.
Currently, we're still in a deficit.
Well, I mean, that's a perfect example. If if you at my con, pre-concept plan say to me that the town office, the town open space is in deficit and you can't do it, this, I mean, this project's never going to work. So.
Currently, we're in a deficit, but we're working towards getting even. But again, it's a still process.
But that's, that's a perfect example. I need to know exactly what my standards are going to be on day one for me to say, okay.
Well, we had told you that. How to design your development. Or not design.
Is there a path to success? Is there even a path to do it? Because if someone told me, we have to get to, let's say, 10% open space for the town, and I say to you, what's your plan? And we don't have one. We don't have, you know, there's no plan.
Right. Again, this isn't the first time you've heard this.
No, 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 I agree.
Because the A P F O deals with also the fire department, which needs to know size, sides, sizes of streets, the curbs and the number of residential developments that go in there and the kids. So that's going to, whoo.
Because he, a lot of those things are answered by DRAs. So let's say there's a $20,000 deficit in the fire department budget to hit for this project, to do, you know, to, let's say, buy a truck. You could say for each residential unit, it's $22. And for each square foot of commercial, it's $5 when you pull a permit. And those monies go to meet certain A P F Os. Some can't be done, like buying open space or something like that. Water, we're going to have to bring water on our property or somewhere else. But if someone tells me, you know, there's a, you know, you need to bring 122,000 gallons, then I know that's what I need to bring to that, to that time, so. Yeah, it's a lot more mechanics for you.
It'll be fun. This is going to be fun.
Can I ask another question? The way this is currently drafted, it has this separate approval of a final plan even after all of that and with a public hearing. Typically, our plans do not go even back to the planning commission after it's been approved on the concept basis. The final plans are typically approved by staff and signed off by the chair of the planning commission unless it's determined that there is a material change, a major change from a concept plan to the final. And then, yeah, it could go back to the planning commission. But by and large, final plans don't go back to the planning commission. This, as it's currently drafted, says it does. Do you want me to eliminate that final step? Barney?
I would like you to eliminate.
The only time that, the only time that final plan does not come back to the planning commission is when you have a preliminary plan in between.
Okay.
So would you have a concept and a preliminary, you would still have twice that it would go to the planning commission.
Okay.
When it's just a site plan, you would have a concept and a final. That final does get approved by planning.
So this is a combination of, because you have a site plan plus a subdivision plan.
Plus a pattern book, plus a pre-concept plan. There's a lot of plans already.
And you're calling the pattern book a 3D plan.
Yeah.
I mean, wouldn't that essentially be your concept plan?
I think so.
I think at that point, when you're submitting the pattern book and the concept, call them both, you know, one in the same.
Yeah.
That is the time that you would first test for the A P F O. It'll get retested again at each plan submission.
Well, not if you have the D R R.
Not if you have the D R A.
So it'll probably be retested.
So that would be your test then? Yeah.
But one thing happens close to the other.
Yeah.
They should be drafted, basically, the D R As drafted based on those, those two plans. So can I, let me ask a question because the terms are a little confusing for me. If we submit the pattern book with what you call capital C concept plan, and then the D R R A is done, what is my next, what do you call the next set of plans?
Our preliminary.
I would think that would be your preliminary plan.
And is that my actual site development plans and permits? Or that's another layout plan?
Not construction plans.
See, that's what I'm saying. There's no need anymore at that point for, to do anything but construction plans to me. Because we've already had multiple layouts, design guidelines and things like that. I know the terms, because the terms you guys use are different. And so I'm just trying to make sure they work in my head. I think once we've gone through that pre-concept and then a pattern book slash concept and then a D R R A, it's really just me and you doing staff-related, you know, technical design plans. Does the planning commission care how deep a storm drainage pipe is?
From a concept to a preliminary to a final, there's, you know, levels of detail that goes in those plans. So call it a preliminary is more like a, I don't know, 60% design, you know, from a concept being maybe 30%. So before you get to that very final plan, we just want to see it one more time so that we know that you're still on the right track and not going down the wrong track from the concept to the final.
Okay, that doesn't make any sense to me, unfortunately. Just because we've gone through so many plans at that point. Everybody knows where the water lines and where we want to put all the things. It's time to start, you know, actually laying them out from technical purposes.
And it always seems to me like this pre-concept plan is your concept plan, even though it's considered a pre-concept because we're working through the public and all that. That's really the heart of it. That's your concept plan. And then your, your, your pattern book and your 3D plan is your concept preliminary, call it. And then maybe the D R A and all the other items are your final. But I understand what you're saying, but you still have to do construction drawings, which aren't reviewed by planning or town council.
Right.
It's at a staff level.
Right.
Mostly engineering.
Yeah, so that actually, so where, like, the pre-concept plan, you don't care where the storm drainage lines are. You don't care where the water lines are. You care.
What's it look like?
What's it look like? What's the density? You know, what's the traffic pattern? Yeah, open space. So the, that concept plan and pattern book together that go just to the planning commission will have, should have, the storm drainage lines and the water lines and everything else. So they would get, that's your 30%.
Yeah.
Okay.
So they would be in that, in that design together. Concept plan, pattern book to planning commission. And then when, once the D R A is done, I would think it would, we should be able to go to just the technical plans at that point.
That all sounds like it's more behind the scenes on town staff level than us.
And so such as skipping, in a sense, the preliminary stage, then the final would still come back to planning commission for approval.
When you say final, is that the actual permit plan or the permits themselves?
Yeah, I would think your permit plans, yes.
And do they review them for sufficiency? Or it's a consent agenda because staff has already done all that technical work?
We take staff's recommendation on those.
Gotcha.
So.
Because, I mean, you know, again, are we going to have public hearings about the depth of storm drains and what kind of invert box and those kind of things? Because that's what those plans are at that point, right? Yeah, okay.
It's more making sure that what was approved previously is still what it is.
Reflected in the permits themselves.
Correct. What you're actually requesting to build is actually what was approved. It's really the big thing. And again, it does come back to staff and our recommendations.
And just kind of funny is, the D R A is the same thing. Town council's going to approve and then it's going to circle back to them on the D R A. Planning commission's going to approve and then it's going to circle back to them on the final plan.
Final text analysis.
Gotcha, okay. That makes sense.
Okay. You good, Tom?
Been listening to this for a while.
I guess we need to let Tom go home and get to work.
It's going to take him a month to get this one done.
So my question now is, it sounds like there's some significant rewrite that needs to go on to this. And I'm not sure it's going to be productive to go line by line and chip this away without knowing how it's going to look in the end. My question would be to council members, Jason as well. Since you're on the phone, that's the only reason I said that. But are there any fundamental problems you have with the way the ordinance is, is written now?
I do not.
Anyone? No. All right, so I think, yeah, we can make a motion to postpone again unless we're running into a time requirement.
I would probably just reintroduce the multicolored red lines so 75 days don't expire from the last one.
Got you.
Okay, all right, reintroduce that now? Okay, all right. And, okay, so I'll make a motion to reintroduce ordinance 2020-1. And the version that has all the red lines in it. Okay? And is there a second on that? Okay, councilwoman Washba seconded. And, and so that'll be back next month.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Roxanne. And please pass on to the planning commission.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, we'll go over this again.
Yeah, we, we do love them and we respect them.
Yeah, I, you know.
Okay.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
And thank you for all the people that have come out tonight and did the speaking on it. Victor, Victor, well, I didn't want to single them out.
All right.
And Roxanne.
All right, we'll see if we can continue on the agenda. Ordinance 2020-4 is a neighborhood professional district proposed text amendment. We have two copies of 2020-4. One is, has a planning commission recommendation. And I think the biggest difference between the two of these, one of them has a five-year window where a building sits vacant. The other one is a three-year vacancy. And the three-year vacancy is the planning commission's recommend, recommended ordinance. And would someone like to bring one of those or make a motion on one of those to approve that?
Go on.
Okay, I would like to bring, hold on a second. Let me find my agenda here, if I can get the numbers right here. Okay, 2020-4. Yeah. Sorry about this.
That one only, that one says five, it doesn't say three. Do I have the wrong copy?
On the front page, it says five, but on inside, it says three.
Okay.
I've got five different copies of everything here. Oh, I would like to bring forward 2020-4 to the floor to discuss the planning commission version of it that changes the time a vacant property needs to be vacant from five to three years.
Okay, all right. So the planning commission version has been moved on. Is there a second on 2020-4, the planning version?
I'll second it.
Okay, councilwoman Reed has seconded and we're into discussion on that. And councilmember Poreer, do you have any comments?
I have no comments at this time, as long as it was the three-year as recommended by the commission.
It is indeed the three-year plan. Carl, you got anything to add?
Nope, that's it.
Councilwoman Washba?
Nope.
Councilwoman Reed, are you?
No, I'm good.
Okay, and I'm good with it as well, so. Do you have any comments, Tom? Anything pertinent? Okay, then, all in favor of passing ordinance 2020-4, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and I heard councilman Poreer as well say aye, so that is unanimous. You are good to go.
Thank you very much.
Only takes a year.
I can offer you just demolition permit, so you should be good.
Next. All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you for being so patient. It's a long meeting. Thank you.
On the agenda is ordinance 2020-18, the extension of expiration dates for special exceptions. And this is for adoption. Would someone like to make a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion to adopt 2020-18.
Okay, that's councilman Munder. Is there a second on that? Councilwoman Washba, a second at that. Discussion, Pam?
Yeah.
Patty?
No, I have no comments.
Carl?
No comments.
And councilmember Poreer, anything?
No comments at this time.
Okay, I have no comments as well, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I think I heard you, councilmember Poreer.
Yes, aye.
Thank you. Okay, ordinance 2020-20 is a budget amendment for the dog park fencing. I will move to introduce that. Is there a second on that? Councilmember Washba, second, so we'll see that next month. And then last one is resolution 20, okay, this one has been pulled, the water and sewer reserve balance because town staff wanted to meet with the chairman of the water and sewer commission and myself. And we're going to do that tomorrow. So we'll see that one next month as well. There is no unfinished business on the agenda. We are down to new business. We are down to new business. The recommendation for the Watkins Park inclusive playground, Gina is on the list here. Did you want to speak to that, or? Okay, she's working her way up to the podium, for those of you listening in.
I can speak to that, as well as Councilwoman Reed. This is a result of the town being awarded the CPMP grant in conjunction with Avis T-21. This is a grant that normally covers seventy-five percent of the cost, but in this case, the town is paying seventy-three percent of the cost, with Avis T-21 paying, paying twenty-seven percent of the cost, resulting in zero percent cost to the town for an inclusive playground at Watkins Park. So the recommendation is to award the, um, the design build to Playground Specialist, Inc., who worked with us to create the design that was approved by the grant. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
As will I.
A couple of questions. Number one, the pavilion and the amphitheater?
Yes.
Are they included in this?
The pavilion is, but not the amphitheater. This is phase one, so it was a scaled-down version, so that it would work within the confines of the grant, which is normally about two hundred thousand. So this is two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant with seventy-five thousand coming from Avis T-21.
Okay, all right. And Mike? My next question was, Avis, did, did they have the money? Will they have the money? What's the guarantee that Avis?
With everything, there's no guarantee, however. Um, over the last couple of weeks, I've been working pretty hard. Obviously fundraising for this year has been completely canceled for everyone. I do have a meeting with a young lady yesterday who volunteered her time. She did some research for me on give-back programs from larger corporations. PNC, MNT, BGE, Bank of America, CVS, a lot of these big box sort of type stores that give back to communities. So we are going to sit down tomorrow and go over those application processes and figure out which ones actually would apply to Avis playground. I have a meeting with the Kiwanis Club on July fifteenth, fourteenth or fifteenth. They actually reached out to me, they are pretty excited about this, um, this playground, and they want to be heavily involved, including probably donating some, some dollars and helping us fundraise. I have a lot of fundraising possibilities that I'm also working on. So, so we do still have quite a bit of money to raise, but it doesn't scare me, actually. I'm pretty, so what Gina and I talked about is that the, the grant is a refundable grant. So the town has to spend the money upfront, and then obviously we get the money back. Avis has, I believe, until June twenty twenty next year, twenty twenty-one, to, to make final payment. So it, yeah, I'm not terribly just over it.
Well, I think, I think the playground is going to look great, and I think, you know, it's, it's a terrific opportunity. Councilmember Munder?
Yeah, I'm, don't take this wrong, I love the playground. I just want to make sure, before we go ahead and award this, can we just make sure that the state has come back and given, has given us all the approvals that they need to give before we go and allocate and spend the money? Just for some reason, we don't say, for some reason, the way I understand it, this still has to go through the state approval process of the actual play, playground itself, at, at different agencies for, for review. It won't, shouldn't take, take long, it's just standard paperwork. But if for some reason, some agency doesn't sign off on it, and we spent the money, then we might not get the reimbursable grants. So the town has to spend the money outright first.
So we've already received the grant, we've received approval for their grant.
You've received the approval, but it's behind-the-scenes work of the grant approval process. So, but I just want to make sure that we've got, we've got the preliminary approval for the grant. But I just want to make sure we get, we get the final approval for the grant before we allocate or spend any money on this.
Carl, are you, are you asking for it to be contingent? Because is, is it not already contingent on receiving matching funds or state funds in the budget?
It.
I think it's contingent on getting those funds.
Okay, does that, so we won't move ahead until we get that? We won't, even though we're talking about awarding the, the contract tonight? Pat Mayer?
Yeah, it's definitely at a disadvantage being on the phone conference, because I'm not looking at all the documents. And if you're, you're awarding building the playground tonight?
No, 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 so, so part of our obligation with the grant is we, we have to move forward with the playground. Otherwise, they don't, they don't reimburse us.
Yeah.
Larry, you have the most experience.
Yeah, Councilmember Reed brought up the point that in order to get reimbursed, you have to spend the money upfront. I think what Councilmember Munder's concern is that he's not comfortable that we are approved for this grant to the point that we're going to be reimbursed.
Yes.
That's fair, that's, that's a fair concern. I don't, maybe Gina and Pam can address that. My only concern is, is Ava paying, paying for the pavilion and the, what's the other part of it, the amphitheater?
Uh, well, the amphitheater is not going to be built, it's the pavilion and the playground.
Okay, but, but Avis T-21, they're not going to pay for the pavilion, are they?
No, 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 let me clarify here. So the, the entire project originally started as the playground. As it progressed, we talked about a pavilion and an amphitheater, sort of creating a full destination. When we applied for the grant, we had to scale, we had to, we had to get to, I think, two hundred thousand dollars, which is all max that we could apply for the grant. So we scaled back the playground, and we kept in the pavilion. So originally, the pavilion was not part of Avis T-21's plan, but it was part of the grant application and the process that we submitted. As it stands right now, we are committed to the pavilion and the half, half of the playground. And quite honestly, I think the pavilion is a really great idea right now, because there's no cover, so the pavilion should be built in the first phase. Now, had we really thought about this prior, Gina and I, we never even discussed, yeah, maybe Avis shouldn't play, pay for the pavilion, but it's already in phase one of the project, so barring anything for unseen. Like, let's just.
Yeah, I just think the town should pay for the pavilion, and that burden should not be on this nonprofit. They should build the, uh, the playground as they committed to, but the pavilion ought to be the town's expense. It's the town, it's a town pavilion.
The only problem with that is we didn't put it in the budget.
Yeah, well, my question would be, you know, what's the breakdown between the pavilion and the playground?
I can tell you.
Well.
Right, were they, was it bid out separately, or was it bid together?
No, it's all the same. Hang on, I can tell you.
And would that mess with the grant?
No, 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 no.
What?
Well, I just think we can help the grant by the town funding that part. We probably, we probably have a price on the Summit Ridge today, and we need it at the same time.
We have the grant for the two hundred thousand, with Avis T-21 paying for seventy-five thousand. And I can tell you, the pavilion is going to be more than seventy-five thousand.
The pavilion is in the bid, and it is forty-nine thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars for the pavilion, yeah.
The Summit Ridge pavilion cost over a hundred.
Yeah, normally a pavilion is about a hundred thousand.
Well, you have to remember, the, the concrete is already there, there's no.
But that price doesn't include installation, that's just the.
Oh, and, well, yeah, installation is nineteen six seventy-five, so.
Yeah, my, my only comment is that Avis T-21, and I know Pam's leading it up, shouldn't have the burden of paying for the pavilion as well. It's my only comment.
So why don't we say this? You know, I, obviously I have a lot of fundraising to do. I may fundraise enough to pay for all of this, like, let's just go with that. And then if for some reason I get in trouble, can we revisit that? I don't think I'm going to get in trouble, to be honest.
You know, and I think that, you know, the, as the caboose was being built, you know, we had grants that went toward that. But the, you know, the plan evolved over time. And, and the community foundation paid for everything that they could, but they couldn't pay for all the changes that the council put on it, you know, so.
So this is very tangible, we have a plan, we know what the equipment costs, we know what the pavilion costs. It, nothing is going to change from this. Again, I feel pretty comfortable with what I have to raise.
I'm, I'm, I'm actually less concerned about that part of it, and more concerned about the town's, how the town, are we fully budgeted right now to, to pay for the amount that will cover the grant? Two hundred thousand, are we budgeted for that?
We would need Char to, she addressed that.
Yes. We, we've all gone, we've gone through Charlene and talked about how this would all be handled, so she's familiar. They had the check ready to go, so I guess it's already been accounted for. I'm not sure exactly how that works when it's budget, funded, funded, budget.
We may need a budget amendment, I don't know.
I don't, Char said the budget amendment wasn't needed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it is.
A budget amendment?
No, I feel like it's needed there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You'll be able to find it better than I can, quicker.
Councilman Power, I have a, I have a few comments.
Yeah, well, they're looking that up, Councilman Porey, go ahead, please.
All right, thank you. Looking at the concept plan that was provided to us from Playground Specialties, I would certainly say that this would make for a great playground. But there is no way that you can put the word inclusive next to that word playground.
No, 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 Jason, that's just what Playground Specialties put on the, the site plan. The project that we called it was Come Play With Me, we have not officially named the playground. And we've actually.
Is this supposed to be an inclusive playground?
Well, so we've gone away from inclusive, we're calling it ADA compliant universally designed.
So it, even using, even using those terms, you're talking about words such as equitable opportunities, which allow for physical, cognitive, and sensory abilities regardless of age or, or ability. It needs to be a playground that would be for children of all ability levels to play, learn, and grow. In looking at that drawing, that is not available for, for children of all ability level.
It actually is. It, so we've had many meetings with Playground Specialties, um, they actually specialize in this. And keep in mind, this is only phase one of the project. So you see all that dead space in the plan. Once the playground's complete, it will be.
What, they, the Playground Specialties offers two types of products. The bareliner products, which are more focused on rope play and play structures, seems to be the focus for play specialties in this, as opposed to the Play World system, which are more welcoming for the ADA compatibility. My question is, what, what system is Playground Specialties using? Is it using their bareliner product, or is it using the Play World system?
It's a combination of both.
The only thing that I see in that drawing would be the three little globe systems. You, you have two rope courses that make up the majority of that playground.
Right, but keep in mind, this is not a completely finished playground, this is just the first phase. In the, the completed playground, there is also equipment where if you are disabled or in, you know, have limited mobility, you have access through ramps and equipment. You could actually, I believe we, there was a car that you could, you know, push a stroller or wheelchair onto. The idea with the Berliner in the center, which is the rope, if you look at the concept picture, there's a, a small child in a wheelchair. Part of inclusive play is being able to access the equipment and play with your, your friends. So there's, there's actually the, the ability to, to roll under the Berliner. Obviously, someone who is in a wheelchair would not be able to climb the Berliner, but they can be with their friends. That, that's part of inclusive.
I understand where they can be with their friends, but to allow them to, to play and grow at this playground, the, the drawing that was submitted with this plan does not seem, in my opinion, to follow that, um, to follow that procedure. Their Play World system are more welcoming for those children that are in wheelchairs that allow them to climb or quote-unquote, be on the equipment. And looking at that rope system, yes, there is a picture of a wheelchair, a, a child in a wheelchair, and I can certainly crop a picture of a child in a wheelchair on any system. But that child is not on the equipment. They are not learning with sensory or physical abilities. They are, they're just grabbing onto the rope.
So Jason, what I can do, and I don't have it with me now, because I don't have my laptop, is actually send you a complete diagram of the entire playground. And I think some of the concerns that you have would be answered once you saw the complete playground.
I would actually really appreciate that, and I think, I hope my, my questions are not showing that I am against this. I am very much for this and have been in the past. I want it to be accessible to all children, and the plan that was submitted does not, in my opinion, show children of all ability levels participating on this playground.
Again, I think the final drawing will show, sort of address those concerns.
I would love to see that.
I'm not taking it as that, Jason. No, I can share your concerns and the overall scheme of things here, so.
I ask a question, is it, you said, is this one quarter or one half of the entire play?
One half.
One half, okay. And is the second half of this going to be probably a couple hundred thousand as well?
Yeah, so, so keep in mind, if, we could take out the pavilion right now, and I could use that seventy thousand dollars to add more of the equipment.
And get more equipment?
And get more equipment, but again, there's no cover there. So it, it makes sense to do the pavilion and some of the equipment first, and then the rest of the, the equipment later.
Yeah, I mean, I like the pavilion myself. I just wanted to know what we were looking at down the road. My other question is, did we solicit multiple bids?
Well, here, here's, actually, Jason, I just kind of found it, so hang on. No, Larry, so you and I actually attended this, we, we did speak with several playground companies in the beginning. Playground Specialty has a federal contract that we are tapping into, which gets us, we're sort of lumping into this buying, this like purchase program. They've already been awarded the contract at the higher level, so we're just tapping into it.
Okay, you know, are, are there any code issues with, with the way this thing was bid? Any code issues with the dollar figure and?
Code issues with the dollar figure?
No, it, issues with the fact that we're spending over thirty-five thousand dollars, and we have one, one bid. Is, is that a problem?
No, no, it's, you're piggybacking on our government contract, yeah.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make that.
So, so I, I know that I can't share this with the public, but I'm going to send this to everyone right now, so if you want to pop it open real quick.
I did get a response from Charlene.
Yeah.
She says everything is budgeted, the Avis portion and the grant portion.
Okay.
So it sounds like two seventy-five is the, probably what's in the budget.
And a final question I have is, and, and I said, Gina, Parsons, have they weighed in on this?
Yeah. They were shown the design at last month's meeting, and. They're showing the design at last month's meeting, and they were all in favor.
Okay, all right.
Can I just ask a question? Thank you for sending that, it's, um, it's, it's great to see the whole picture.
So the, the second structure, which is not shown in the plan that everyone has right now, it, it's built on a series of ramps that are accessible for all kids. And within that larger structure, there's all kinds of sensory play, whether it's high, whether it's low. Um, there's a swinging car, um, that, that, that will, that is handicapped accessible. Um, so they can get, you know, you can go right into this car, and it actually sways and swings. So there's quite, a lot more equipment coming.
Now, now, my thought was this, though, is I'm looking at that equipment as opposed to the other equipment. That seems much more inclusive.
Yeah, so-
Than the first, so-
The little pods that you see, um, so, children with Down syndrome, um, they sometime like to be secluded. So those are pods that, um, children can go into and sort of, you know, take a moment, play independently. Um, there's climbing, there's, there's, there's all kinds of great things in there.
My, my concern is this, though. Um, when do you think, if we went with the Phase One, when are you anticipating the Phase Two?
Well, we would hope next year, we'd have to reapply for the grant.
Okay, so that's my concern is, okay. My concern is after, um, attending the MML conference, one of the sessions that I attended was with the state leaders, such as Peter Franchat and, um, Brian Frosch, the Attorney General, and Senator Jennings. And one of the things that Peter Franchat said was that in regards to what twenty-one, twenty-two budget is gonna look like for the state, that two thousand eight is gonna look like a picnic compared to what the state is going to be experiencing. So my concern is that grants are going to be very slim. And this just looks like something that would be more readily used by everyone as opposed to what's shown in the center. I understand these pods probably would be, you know, very, very great for children with Down syndrome, but I'm just a little bit concerned about putting all our money into what's in the center, which is, I, I tend to agree with Councilwoman Poirier that it's not as inclusive as the other equipment. So I'm not sure what the cost of that other equipment is, but that's just-
Can I offer up a suggestion? I mean, the, you got a lot of money in a grant, congratulations on that, by the way. Uh, and you've done a lot of fundraising, and congratulations and thank you for all of that. What if you waited a month, uh, went back to the vendor, uh, took some, uh, Councilmember Poiriers and, and some other concerns here, and see if that money could, could go towards structures that are a little more comfortable to, to some of the council members?
So Gina, when do we have to order equipment by to maintain our current pricing?
Yeah, they said, um, we've been lucky since when we submitted this grant originally, there hasn't been any price increases, but they said that it could happen anytime. Um, but the, also, the equipment takes fourteen weeks to actually receive. So the earliest we could anticipate getting this is October. Um, but also, yeah, they broke, that was the original plan, they broke it down for us to fit within the two hundred thousand, probably because the larger piece there wouldn't break down easily into the two hundred thousand. So, you know, that's, that's why they chose the pieces of equipment they chose.
So, so they chose equipment so that we could fit within that two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars?
And starting with the centerpiece also seems more logical, and then the, um, the padding, right now, in the Phase One, doesn't include that outside edge.
Okay, all right.
Do we ever, did they ever give a quote on just the, say, the other equipment?
Yeah, the, the quote is broken down by pieces of equipment.
I know, well, it's not piece of equipment, but say, the all, say, parts Phase, Phase Two, the equipment in Phase Two, the stuff that's not shown in this drawing, how much was that for all that equipment? Was that ever given?
So I don't have, I don't have the original proposal in front of me, I mean, I, I still have it, I could go back and look. Um, but I think the entire project was just over five hundred thousand?
Yeah, it was, yeah.
I think it was five hundred and eighty, five eighty or something like that, yeah.
I'm just wondering, would it be easier to just take out this, the centerpiece and just put in the Phase Two equipment? And keep the pods too? I mean, that's why I'm asking how much the Phase Two equipment ran.
The other thing is, they really like the, the middle piece because of the height and the attention it will draw to the surrounding community. So when passersby see it on twenty-seven, they'll be invited to come.
Right, so the other, the other side of this is to create a destination, you know?
Yeah.
It will bring people to Mount Airy, you know, we chose this grand centerpiece, um, kind of as an eye catcher. You know, people, people are on twenty-seven, they see it, they wanna stop, they wanna play, they wanna enter and stay in Mount Airy.
It, it may facilitate fundraising for the follow-on.
Yeah, that's what, um-
Yeah.
Um, I, I guess my question is, um, you know, if, if we vote to approve this tonight, uh, is there, is, is everyone comfortable enough to go to a vote on this? You know?
I would say yes and no, for me, I just wanna make sure that we have final approval for, from the state to go spend the money from the different agencies.
Okay, so-
At MML, I was on the here, on the call with, um, DNR Secretary, and she said, yeah, this year's good, but there has been instances where municipalities have gone ahead thinking they would get the grant, and then they're on, then for some reason, they didn't. Not saying it, it would happen here, just saying that for some reason, they were not awarded the grant. And then they're on the hook to cover the full cost-
All right.
Of the money.
So you're, you're-
And the budget is contingent on, I'd just like to see that, you know, hey, we got, you know, we're ninety-five percent sure we're gonna get the grant, even though we just got preliminary approval. I just wanna make sure it's gone through the state approval process, through all the different agencies prior to, you know, handing out the contract, is my best.
Yeah, I mean, we, we reviewed it and understand what is required to get the reimbursement, the proper documentation and all that. Uh, we've worked with, uh, our county representative before on other grants, so, um, you know, I'll double check to make sure there isn't any other hoops that we're missing.
Well, not documentation from our point, what I'm saying is, since I look at some of similar stuff at work, is that whenever there's a grant through the state, it goes to what's called the clearinghouse.
Mm-hmm.
So therefore then, it goes to various agencies that might have a say in it. And so we've been awarded the grant, the grant's been approved, so it's still in, say, step one of the state approval process. Now it's being cleared, sent out to the different agencies for them to look at the grant application and make sure that it doesn't violate anything when it go across, it's not building wetlands or waterways or something of that nature. And at any point through that approval process, an agency can say, hey, it doesn't meet this requirement. So provide us more information. But if we go ahead and spend that money, and for some reason, I wanna say for some reason, it can't be worked out, the differences, and for some reason, the grant's not awarded, then the town's on the hook for the money.
Still on the hook. Uh, so, do you wanna make the motion, contingent on, on assurance that we have the grant?
Well, it's in the, it's in the budget's contingent on that, so I just wanna make assurance that it, no money will be spent. Can I make a motion if?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I just say, I would like to make the motion that we can award the grant, but there's, nothing will proceed until we get final assurance of state money.
That's fair enough.
For the reimbursable grant.
Someone like to second that?
Well, I, I probably shouldn't. I'll second it.
Are you going to recuse yourself from the vote? Okay, all right, so there's four of us, uh, voting on that, it was seconded by Councilwoman Washabaugh. Uh, all in favor of approving this plan as drafted? Yeah, did someone have something to say? Mayor?
Great job, exactly how it should be, Pam, you should be voting, go ahead.
Okay, all right, and, uh, okay, so, any, any other, uh, comments, Councilmember Poirier?
Um, so, uh, Carl mentioned Phase Two before the center one, I didn't quite get that clear enough. If you could just repeat it, can we do Phase Two before so that we have an actual inclusive playground? And if grant is, grant money is available, we can do the actual regular playground? Or is that not possible?
Councilmember Reed, I think your best answer to that.
Um, so again, when we worked with Playground Specialty to come up with equipment that fit within the, the grant amount and what Avis T-21 Foundation could pay, the, the equipment on the, the plan that you see is what they recommended. And keep in mind, all this equipment is considered ADA compliant and inclusive.
Pam, can they make some adjustments? That's what I'm hearing from a couple of councilmembers, can they swap out a few pieces to make it fully inclusive, uh, from Phase One, because we all pretty much know Phase Two will be delayed.
Yeah.
It is fully inclusive right now at Phase One.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I mean, my comment is, uh, you know, I, it's, it's not i- ideal. Ideal would be to have everything, um, you know, uh, but I do think that the pavilion and that centerpiece coming in will, will actually help with, uh, with Councilmember Reed's ability to fundraise in the future, and I'm, I'm willing to make that trade-off, so, uh, that's my comment, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be voting for this, so.
One concern, though, the grant was based on this design, the Phase One design that we submitted, so-
Right.
You couldn't negate everything.
So, so if you change the plans, it's probably gonna change the dollar figure.
Yeah.
All right, uh, any other comments before we vote? Okay, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, sounds like all four of us, Jason, you were an aye, correct?
Aye.
Okay. All right, you guys are good to go. All right, uh, next on the agenda is a new police vehicle, uh, Chief Reed. And I read through this, it looks like, uh, we went up and down on vehicle types and eventually settled on something that was, um, that saves us eleven thousand dollars. And is this for the, the new police officer that we approved, or?
It's not necessarily for that particular officer, but it's to include the officer, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, the vehicles will be assigned, usually, the new officer gets the older patrol vehicle, so.
They kinda shift around.
Right.
Now, this one is, uh, not painted, correct, uh, not painted in MAPD colors?
Correct, this is a marked vehicle, correct.
Gray like yours?
Yes, well, it's, we have a dark gray one, which is assigned to Corporal Brooks.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
Uh, excuse me, gentlemen, before we get too much in the weeds about the paintings, uh, I do wanna have a discussion with the chief about too many unmarked cars. This particular vehicle is going to the chief, correct, chief?
Correct.
Okay, uh, with that clarification made, your vehicle that is currently unmarked too, we may wanna revisit marking that, just in general, I, I'm gonna look to you for your guidance on the value of unmarked and marked, since it came up tonight. I'm not sure I'm proponent of having all mark, all unmarked, but I see value in some, so. If we could take that discussion offline, I'd appreciate it.
Certainly. Yeah, I think, I, you were asking a question, right, mayor? The question being, uh, what is the correct balance of, of marked and unmarked cars, is it?
Well, I wasn't asking a question, I was asking for a discussion offline, it's outside of this topic.
Oh, okay, all right, gotcha.
Uh, but just in general terms, I'm, I'm a little concerned that we're going too many unmarked. Uh, this one's unmarked because it's going to the chief, but his previous, his older one is still unmarked. But again, that's, I don't think that's germane to this conversation.
Okay, all right, good enough, I, I misunderstood you a little bit, so, uh, but I think that's a valid, uh, conversation, yeah. So, uh, I'll make the motion that we approve the, um, mm-hmm, what was it, six, seven, what was it? Thirty-six thousand eight hundred sixty dollars?
Yes.
Uh, for a new vehicle for the Mount Airy Police Department, is there a second on that? Okay, Councilwoman Washabaugh, seconded, is there call on discussion, Councilmember Reed?
No comment.
Okay, Munder? Councilmember Washabaugh?
No comment.
And Councilmember Poirier? Jason, did you have any comments?
Sorry, it is, it is now a Chevy Tahoe and not a Ford Explorer.
True, chief.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, uh, that's correct, Jason.
All right, thank you.
Okay, uh, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, no one opposed, so that is unanimous, and it looks like you have a new car.
Yeah, thanks, sir.
But it's a Chevy, that's the problem, so. All right, uh, recommendation for a boom lift, uh, I believe that our town administrator, David Warrington, is here to speak on that.
I have Brian's permission to speak for him, so, just not stepping on his toes.
Okay.
A budgeted item that, uh, came effective on July first, and Brian was ready to go with this. This is on a preferred contract, state contract, uh, which is, uh, under our procedures you're allowed to piggyback on and utilize, and that's where he is right now recommending the purchase of this boom lift. Help us hang decorations, trim trees, do all kinds of things.
Okay, I, I don't have any paperwork on this, do you guys have? Oh, wait a minute, okay, I got it now.
Yeah. It's kinda hidden since it's rentals.
Yeah, was it, well, it was hidden behind the, uh, police car. Um, okay, so what are we looking at? Forty, forty-nine thousand dollars for this thing?
Yes.
What are, what are we using now? Are we renting?
We've been renting every time we need one, which is why, in particular, on the train station, it took so-
Uh, Larry, just for some history, uh, Councilmember, uh, Phoebus did not like the fact that we went around and changed the flags on Main Street with a front loader and somebody in the bucket.
Yeah, oh shit.
Yeah, I, I didn't like that either, so, uh, I, I just, I don't know what the balance is between, uh, rental and, and actually purchasing a machine, so, uh, is-
Uh, you, you all did budget for it, I mean, discussion may have been better at that time, but, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh-
Yeah, but what was happening was, uh, for example, the, we had the lettering that goes on the outside of the train station, and Brian waited and tried to consolidate so that when we're putting the Christmas decorations up, he then did the lettering, so some things get delayed. Uh, he also said that the, the tree trimming, instead of hiring someone to come in and do tree trimming, they can do a lot of it themselves, so.
That's-
It's an economy of scale to, to, to go out this route, which is why he recommended it in the budget.
Yeah, okay, all right, cool. So, all right, um, someone else wanna make the motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of a boom lift from, I take it, United Rentals for the total of forty-nine thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Okay, is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, Councilmember Reed, seconds, uh, any more discussion or any questions for our town administrator?
So I just have, you probably said this, and I probably just didn't hear it. So how much did it cost to rent this boom equipment?
When we were renting it, I believe, for three days, uh, it was in excess of six hundred dollars, somewhere around there, so that was just for the three-day rental, it was about two hundred dollars a day. And he was renting it frequently, um, but also, the other issue was for tree trimming, there were parts where they just couldn't get to it, so they were hiring, on top of that, the tree companies to come in and do trimming, so. The idea is that we'll be able to do things in a more expeditious manner, but also expand what can be done with it. So that was the idea, that it, not only the boom rental, but also just the work that we were hiring other people to do that we can now do ourselves.
Yeah, I think it's, um, I mean, there's no doubt that we- Yeah, I think it's, um, I mean, there's no doubt that we need one, that's why we've been renting one. And there are, you know, between the different holidays and different things that we're putting up on our post, I think. I, I think it's just a piece of equipment that a town needs, you know? Um, so, all right, um, any other discussion? Councilmember Porey, did you have any, any questions?
Nope, I just want to make sure that, you know, as we're, as these things are coming back up, that all of these things were in the budget at the last, uh, budget meeting. So we've already, we already approved this, we just need to, to say yes on it, that's all.
Okay. All right, uh, all in favor of that expense, uh, say aye.
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 And I assume you're, uh, aye as well, Jason?
Yes, I'm sorry, you couldn't hear me, aye.
Okay, all right, thanks. Okay, uh, next on the agenda is to set a date for the September Town Council meeting because we always end up doing that, uh, because of Labor Day. And we can't go the week prior because that's the planning commission meeting, so we're gonna have to go the week after, which is gonna end up being, uh, September fourteenth. So is everybody good with, uh, September fourteenth?
I am.
Could be, yeah.
Yes.
Got plenty of time to adjust your schedules.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so that town council meeting will be on September fourteenth. All right, then, then the, uh, final thing on the, before we get to reports, is the Nottingham bond with, uh, Catonsville Homes. And, uh, uh, Jason, did you want to spend or was Barney going to?
Yep, I can, uh, quickly, uh, speak on it. And if anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Um, what this is, we are changing, well, I say we because I'm part of Nottingham, but the Nottingham HOA would, uh, like to change the public works agreement with Catonsville Homes to make it more, uh, feasible for the community. It has been a number of years since Catonsville has even made an attempt to finish what they had in their original public works agreement. And since it's been so long, the HOA has decided that we no longer, uh, needed one of the trails that, uh, Catonsville originally had in the public works agreement back in two thousand and would like one of the playgrounds to be rehabbed and replaced. In addition to that, the, um, if you are looking at the map, uh, that was sent out, um, one of the trails that is on town property next, that runs, uh, parallels to the waste, water waste treatment ponds there, um, it will be built on town property as well as the boardwalk that crosses the wetland and heading up to the wastewater treatment plant road, uh, quote unquote rails to trails. So the, the original trail from Locksley to the wastewater treatment plant road will not be built. And instead of that, the HOA voted to have the King's Bridge and cross the playground rehabbed and replaced and still have Catonsville Homes build the trail that is on town property.
So, Jason, just to, the map that was included, exhibit one, so what's gonna be built now, is that in pink?
So the trail that will be built is in pink. The trail that is in blue will not be built.
Okay. I was just asking, because the part of the blue and the pink were together down by the wastewater treatment, I just wanted to make sure.
Uh, councilmember Porey?
They originally still crossed that wetland. The pink one goes all the way to the wastewater treatment road.
Okay.
I believe the, uh, mayor has a question for you, councilmember Porey.
Yeah, I was, and actually it's for the entire council in town, I'm just wondering, so a lot of, uh, there was a lot of requests in there, uh, that probably need to be digested. Uh, many of them are required, uh, developer to agree with. So I don't think you're gonna resolve that tonight, correct?
Say that again, Pat, you were kind of jumbled there.
Uh, there was, there was a lot of concerns, uh, from the Nottingham HOA or a lot of changes. Uh, and many of them involve the, uh, the developers, so you can't make a decision on that tonight anyway until you check with the developer, correct?
Well, it's my, so what the council has is, uh, the, uh, agreement itself that I understand the developer and the HOA have both agreed to. This is in the form of the amendment to the public works agreements for the phases, uh, the, the woodlands at Nottingham. Uh, it's my, I wasn't pretty to these negotiations, but I, it's my understanding that the HOA developer have agreed to this.
Oh, okay. Okay, that's fine. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, do you want to verify that, Jason? Uh, the developer is on board with this plan?
This is correct. The HOA as a board voted unanimously to have this playground. We have sent, uh, including the HOA as well as Barney as the engineer to inform, uh, Catonsville Homes of, uh, what was coming forth. And, um, as, as my understanding that everyone is on the same page and is clear and within a reasonable amount of time, uh, will be able to receive their bond back.
Okay, that sounds good. Uh, the motion for this?
Yes.
Uh, uh, councilmember Porey, do you want to make a motion to amend the public works agreements?
I'll make a motion, go ahead.
Okay, to, uh, okay, Jason's made a motion to amend the public works agreements, phase one, two, and three of the woodlands in Nottingham, and I will second that motion. There any more discussion? I've read through it and I'm, I'm content with, uh, with that plan. Does anyone else have any comments?
I mean, I'm content with, I had some side questions, but I think it's just because it's a mention in an existing public works agreement. I just want to make sure, is anyone in town, just to make sure that the developer, Catonsville Homes on board, have they, we received any confirmation from them saying they agree to this?
Yeah, we've received emails from them and, and we've sent the documents to them and, and they haven't had any, they're, they're in agreement with it.
Okay, I just want to make, councilmember Porey said, he's understanding, I just want to make sure that the town has hard proof from Catonsville Homes that they're in agreement with this.
All right.
And they have to sign off on the final document, so, I mean, it's.
Yeah, I mean, if they don't agree with it, then they've got a, they're under an obligation to build the whole trail.
Okay. Got you, okay. Have money from the town for this, correct? Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Hey, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, and, uh, no one's opposed, so that one is unanimous. And I'm sure Nottingham and the developer, and I'm happy too, I think we're all happy. You good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, so now we're down to, uh, mayor and council reports. Uh, mayor, uh, would you like to read a report or discuss anything? Pat? Yeah, we got you.
Okay, uh, yeah, I have just a quick summary I'd like to read, but before I do that, this has been the longest, perhaps the most productive meeting we've had in months. And, uh, great job to the council and, uh, council president for running such a great meeting. Uh, with that said, uh, we're starting to get back to normal, uh, but I'd like to remind the citizens of Mount Airy to still please be cautious. Thanks to the citizens, town council leadership, our staff who's been, uh, just phenomenal, our emergency response team, we've all been working together and we will continue to work together to, uh, address issues such as businesses, the citizens, uh, and the graduating senior needs that I think, uh, have already been accomplished and, uh, wish them well. Uh, we've assembled a team to oversee some exciting downtown cleanups in safe door out, uh, safe outdoor community use, so, uh, stand by for, uh, some of that. I look forward to working with the council and volunteers to clean up some downtown areas. Uh, the events for July are still being canceled. Uh, we encourage everybody to shop safer at home with our new outdoor opportunities, our music on Main Street. Come out and enjoy yourself. Uh, Town Hall is back full time, but we're not opening the office yet, but all the folks are back to work, so you should not notice any disruption in service. Uh, many of you have seen, uh, the road improvements on South Main Street Extension. These are, have been planned for a long time, kind of around the development down with the Chickalee, but we felt it responsible to move forward now and we talked to Streets and Roads Commission, thank you, councilwoman Patty. And, uh, I heard from councilwoman Reed that these improvements have helped, so thank you, Barney. Uh, we also have some downtown zone road improvements, uh, uh, within a few weeks. Center Street, Cross Street, Park Street, Park Avenue and Veterans will have new traffic patterns and, uh, with some repaving and restriping and a revised parking plan. Uh, just to let everybody know, we talked about it a bit tonight, on May twenty-eighth, we were awarded the, uh, the grant for the playground. On March eighteenth, the town was awarded eight hundred thousand dollars. That still looks like we're gonna get that. That's for CSX Projects and Center Street. And our, in March twentieth, the town was awarded about twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, from the Arts Council. So we're doing our best to get, uh, the money that we can for the town. That concludes my report, uh, if there's no questions. Okay, time is the last. I'll get into the reappointments and they are, let me see here, Beverly Blatchford for the hardest working beautification commission, Kenneth Jackson, uh, he's been a great chair of the Board of Appeals and of course, our own historic Pete Ballas, uh, for recycling and sanitation. I'd like to, uh, get your approval to reappoint all.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, commission appointments for the mayor. Is there a second? Councilmember Munder seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's unanimous. We're down to beautification parks in rec, councilmember Munder.
Oh, sorry, I was waiting for the town administration, okay, sorry about that. Uh, beautification commission report. Unfortunately, there was no meeting held during the month of June due to the COVID related concerns. But I am happy to report that the commission has continued, commission members have continued dropping by various parks and gardens for maintenance of those gardens. They have put up the red, white, and blue bunting along Park Avenue in Wildwood Park for the Fourth of July. I would like to say the town has received many thanks for people for doing this, it was well appreciated. And I drove by and they looked nice, uh, set the town, I want to say, set, set the mood for the town for the Fourth of July. And if all goes well, we are, the, the plan is for the commission to be holding its July twenty-first meeting in the Wat- Watkins Park Pavilion at seven PM. The recreational parks meeting was held Thursday, six eighteen via Zoom. We had four presentations and I'm gonna go over those quickly. Girl Scout troop eight-one-zero-two-zero-two, if I got that number right, came back before the commission to give an update on their effort to place no smoking signs in Watkins, Wildwood, and Prospect Parks. They will be located at the entrance to the park and the, and at the start of the walking trails there. And we are in the process of working out details with the town on placement and design of the signs. So expect to see no smoking signs soon in the parks, just to remind people that there is no smoking in the parks, like they're currently prohibited to, not to smoke there. Cub Scout Pack eleven ninety-one did a presentation to seek board approval and thoughts on the placement of a dozen kindness rocks in various town parks and the rails to trails. These wa- these rocks will mention the twelve points of the scout law. The board gave a enthusiastic thumbs up for this project. And we had pickleball classes came to be this, uh, excuse me a second. Two instructors, Mark Austin and Ron Legor came before the board to seek approval and our input on allowing each of them to reserve times on the pickleball courts for classes. The board would like to work on some issues with this proposal due to the popularity of the courts by town residents and not wanting to limit space on them. And the board is considering having the back basketball court at Prospect Park relined for pickleball. And this may allow for this request to happen and would allow the town to obtain another court at minimum cost. Uh, the fourth and final discussion or presentation before the board was mountain bike trails at Wendy Ridge Park. Pat and Kristen Ellis came before the board to present a plan to have a network of trails of, for mountain bikes within the confines of the park. The plan included park improvements and economic benefits to the town if the network was created. Board, board members discussed the topic and the decision was for the Ellis's to gather more information and work with the board to see if there was a way to move forward. The board encouraged the presentation, the presenters to reach out to the community surrounding Wendy Ridge Park for input on this project and after the meeting, not that same night, but a couple of days after, board members, town staff, and two councilmembers met with the presenters to walk the park and to hear their ideas and to offer suggestions. And I just want to remind all the people, as the mayor did, that the people using the parks, please use caution and maintain social, social distancing while doing so. And the next meeting will be held via Zoom on July sixteenth at seven PM. And just one quick mention, I would like to say, I found some interesting article in the Mount Airy Messenger, the most recent messenger, kind of showing some, showing the things that problems never really go away for the town. They related, there were two, uh, historic articles relating to the ever increasing traffic on Twin Arrows Road to Park Avenue. And that was from nineteen fifty, I believe. And the other one was related to the traffic and the twists and turns on Main Street coming from downtown, and that was from the nineteen sixties. So the problems seem to be never ending or keep coming, coming back. So I thought that was kind of funny.
Only, only the faces change.
Uh, councilmember Munder, a couple of questions. First of all, yeah, uh, people read some of those old articles and think they're current, uh, which has been an issue. On the no smoking, have you considered adding no smoking, no vaping? I don't know if that's been evaluated. Uh, and my only other comment would be is, uh, on that pickleball, uh, commercial usage, yeah, I look forward to hearing parks recommendation on that issue. So, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, yeah, we're trying to work, work through some issues on the, uh, classes and stuff, so. We'll see what happens with that.
Yeah, did you catch the vaping part? I can't tell from my.
Did you say baking?
Vaping, were, were you saying no smoking in the park? Have you considered also extending that to?
Oh, got you.
It should say that, yeah, I'll see if Gina or someone has contact and reach out there and see what stage they're in. Of the sign printing. Good catch, Pat, or mayor, thank you.
Okay, uh, next Economic Development Planning Commission, uh, councilmember Reed?
Yep, so Economic Development met on Wednesday, June twenty-fourth. We spent a lot of time talking about the Small Business Operating Grant and how we can improve the process if we ever have to, um, do this again. We did receive twenty-three grant applications, nineteen of those were awarded, four did not qualify. Um, so obviously we needed more than thirteen thousand, but we didn't quite need thirty thousand, so we, we kind of nailed it, in my opinion. The Mount Airy Business Survey Committee was formed, um, but we have not had a chance to meet with the Growth Task Force. We're hoping to meet before the next EDC meeting. And Vid in Mount Airy, which is a tour of available commercial space within Mount Airy, is rescheduled for June twenty, June twenty-twenty-one. Um, obviously, we weren't able to have it this year due to COVID nineteen. EDC will be reviewing and drafting a possible loan program for future assistance to businesses as they recover from COVID nineteen pandemic. We also have to talk about whether it's actually needed. Um, assuming or sort of guessing that there might be, um, a second phase. Um, so it's something that we are gonna start researching and talking about in the upcoming months. Uh, EDC had their annual elections, Donna Marie was elected as chairwoman again for the following year and Ray Miller was elected as secretary. Uh, BGE Pay It Forward, councilman Munder and I. year, and Ray Miller was elected as secretary. BGE Pay It Forward. Councilman Munder and I had a conference call with BG on Thursday, July 2nd. I'm actually going to turn it over to Carl to give a recap of that meeting. Unfortunately, I was driving during the conference call and couldn't write down my notes.
No problem. I'll try to give what I can here, Councilwoman. As the Councilwoman said, that was, the call was held on July 2nd. PSC did come with, did make a decision regarding Pay It Forward. Unfortunately, it was not what we were hoping for. They decided to hold an evidentiary process at the recommendation of the People's Council. And unfortunately, the hearing is, is scheduled for April 22nd and 23rd of 2021. So it'll be approximately a year before any final decision heard. And they're anticipating a decision on the program in June of 2021 for, for that. The evidentiary, the, the People's Council was concerned that with this program, it's changing the way gas lines are currently paid, paid for by, it's paid, so they just want to make sure no one's getting gypped in the deal at the end of the day. So that is, the gas lines will be paid, paid for. So they just decided to go for the evidentiary, very hearing process. Why it's so, so long, I'm not sure. But we, we'll be working with BG and E to, we'll still be working with BG and E to get some things, and to get some, provide them with some data for that.
Thank you, Carl.
You're, you're welcome. That's about the best I can say without going into too much detail.
So the next EDC meeting will be Wednesday, July 22nd. The Planning Commission met on Monday, June 29th. Hannah Weber, the Carroll County Planner, did attend that meeting. She stated that their commission gave a favorable recommendation for an employment park off Route 27 north of Mount Area. There is a public hearing scheduled on July 21st at 9:00 AM. It will be aired live on the county site through their media portal. If you can't attend the meeting, you can certainly watch. The final site plan for Twin Arch Business Park Lot 32 was given approval. It's a 12,000 square foot flex space building and parking lot. That approval was condition, conditionary of the, the county and town comments being addressed. We spent a lot of time talking about M X D. We already talked about that tonight, so we don't have to go over that again. The next meeting is Monday, July 27th. And just to make a note, Junior Task Force, Task Force did have one Zoom meeting over the last few months. Obviously, you know, we, we couldn't meet in person, and that Zoom meeting was not incredibly productive, trying to keep a, a bunch of young ones focused. So I'm hoping that by September, if the, the parents feel comfortable, that we will be able to meet in person. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much. Next is sanitation and recycling and Mount Area Sustainable Commission, Councilmember Porey.
Thank you. We have not conducted any meetings due to COVID. This Saturday, July 11th, is yard waste. We also have another yard waste pickup on July 25th. There is a up-and-coming shredding event that is taking place on July 16th. But it does come with some restrictions. It is held at the Mount Area Senior Center from 9:00 to 11:00. You must be 60 years of age or older, or 18 and older for adults with disabilities. So it is not completely open to the public. There are some restrictions in place, but it, it is an opportunity for some people to get some shredding done. That is on July 16th. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much. Next is Streets and Roads Commission, Councilmember Washabaugh.
I'm going to make this very easy. Our meeting is tomorrow night, so I have nothing to report. Thank you very much.
Very nice. Okay. Next is the Water and Sewer, Sewer Commission Special Projects Report, and that's myself. The Water and Sewer Commission met. We discussed the public education. We decided that we would table that because of COVID. And, and we'll pick that up after, after we're through the pandemic, for the most part. We talked about the emergency response team and what the town could do as far as water relief for residents that are outside of town limits in an emergency if their wells started going dry. And the end result of that is to look at the, at the town's emergency response plan. And, and when that does come up, the, the Water and Sewer Commission would be interested in participating in that conversation. We worked on that reservation, I'm sorry, that resolution that we will see next month. And we reviewed the water use limitation tiers in the event of a drought. And one of our members just wants to take a look at that and make sure that we have our ducks in a row if, if we have to go through water restrictions in the future. The next meeting is Wednesday, July 8th, and that'll be a Zoom meeting, starting at 7:00 PM. Special Projects, Historical Society's been staying in touch with each other. They're itching to get together in a room again, but, but certainly holding off until it's safe to do so. The Rotary Club is teaming up with the Mount Area Volunteer Fire Company to conduct a new event that we'd never seen here. It's called a duck regatta. And it's similar to a raffle, but the winners are decided by rubber ducks that are going down a stream of water. And there's some logistics that have to be figured out here. The first is having an adequate amount of water to float potentially 1,000 ducks down, and where to do that. So the fire company is looking at the road right beside it, which will include a, a potential road closure, as well as having the needs for the water to get these ducks sailing down Cottonwood Road. But it's a, it's a neat concept. If you want to Google something or YouTube something that's fun, look at the duck races going on in other towns. As I said, the Rotary will show up to Wednesday's Water and Sewer Commission meeting, just to discuss what's going on. The MAVSC is on board with it, and they're, they're looking at a tentative date of September 12th for conducting this. So like I said, a lot of hoops to go through, but it would be an exciting fundraiser for the Mount Area Volunteer Fire Company. So, and that concludes my report. And now we're down to the Town Administrator Report. Did you want to, okay, we, we have your written report, and I think we'll, we'll be okay with that tonight. But next month, we're going to drag you up to the microphone.
Okay. All right. Down to the Town Attorney Report. Tom, I know you've been busy.
Yeah, worked on M X D, CSX, which we'll talk about, Town View, which we're close to closing on. Attended the Planning Commission meeting on 6/29 due to a couple of the ordinances. Helped the Police Department on a document production, as well as put together the Nottingham PWA amendment that you had before you.
All right. And we all have access to the Code Enforcement Report. And we do need to have a closed meeting to discuss CSX and I guess Town View as well. Rails to trails. All right. And I'll make a motion that we adjourn following that closed meeting. Okay? And, and I'll do a roll call on that. Councilmember Munder?
Aye.
Okay. Councilmember Washabaugh?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Porey?
Aye.
Okay. And I'm an a as well. So with that, we will go into closed session, and the meeting will be adjourned following that point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you, Roxanne.